Hello, are we ready to start? It's after nine, we're going to begin?
Yes.
Okay, it's after nine, we're about to begin. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Badwick?
Here.
Commissioner Kern?
Here.
Commissioner Caliendo?
Here.
Here.
She's on her way, send traffic.
Commissioner Burke?
Here.
Mr. Brumfield? Commissioner Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Okay, all right, we have quorum.
We have quorum.
Okay. Can everybody stand place for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Lord, we ask you for your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and the welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC-1W 47, 2300 North Dog Road, West Palm Beach, 33411, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, planned developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type two variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type two variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing in the sixth floor Jane Thompson Memorial Chambers, 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, 33401, at 9:30 AM on Thursday, April 28, 2022, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, requested uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following requirements. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record of the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair, who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order the fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication? Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can we let the record reflect that Commissioner Scarborough has joined us?
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Scarborough? Motion to receive and file?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file publication?
Second.
So we got Commissioner Kern and Commissioner Caliendo?
Yes.
And the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Swearing in, please.
All those wishing to testify or speak on any of today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
A quick note for those that will be, that were wishing to speak that have signed comment cards. Each person wishing to be speak will be given two minutes to speak. We will not be deferring any time over to anybody else. We have a lot of people that are here, both in the room and in the room outside, so we want to make sure that everybody gets their, you know, their full two minutes. Okay? Thank you. Okay. The adoption of minutes?
Make a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion by Caliendo and seconded by Ms. Scarborough?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, amendments to the agenda. We have a document that we prepared for you, which includes item number four, 2021-01577, Central Baptist, where we're modifying compliance condition number two of Exhibit C1. Item number five, 2021-01031, HABAD, relative to deletion of a duplicative compliance condition and modifications to site, building and site design conditions. We have item number seven, 2021-2124, which is Lost Farms, where we're removing a use limitation condition. Item number nine, 2021-1529, where there's modifications to the request, the variance summary that we have in our staff report, and engineering condition number six. And item number 10 on the ad delete, 2021-460, all seasons, where we also have modification to engineering condition. I also want to point out that item number eight, 2021-921, Palm Beach Logistics, which is on the consent agenda, staff is working with the agent on the site design condition number two, so we're working on some modifications to that language. Other than that, we do not have any cards for item number 10, which happens to be SV-PDDCA 2021-460, all seasons. If, when we get to the consent agenda, if you'd like to reorder and move that to consent, we can, you guys can discuss that at that time.
Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to adopt the agenda with the changes and amendments. Any disclosures?
Yes, I spoke to, I spoke to the agent on 2021-01529.
Yes, I spoke to the agent on item number nine, regular agenda.
I also spoke to the agent on item number nine from the regular agenda.
I too also spoke to the agent from item number nine, regular agenda.
I spoke to the agents on agenda number nine and number 10.
None.
Yes, I spoke to the agent on item number nine on the regular agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any conflicts or recusals?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a conflict with item number three, 01322, and with the same applicant on number seven, 02124, those are both on consent agenda. I have to recuse myself because I have contracts with the firm of Jennifer Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay. So that'll bring us to page two of our agenda, which is our postponements, remands, withdraw. We have two items under postponement, ZVABNCA 2021-797, which is the Palma Lee Car Wash. The applicant requested before our five-day deadline to postpone to May 5, as well as item number two, ZV2021-1937, Critchfield Holdings, and they also requested before our deadline to postpone to May 5. No motion is required for either one of them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So that'll bring us to the consent agenda. I know that we have some cards on item number six, DOACA 2021-1576. If you want to pull the item for the agenda, or if you'd like to hear comments from the public.
Yeah, we will hear the couple comment because we have a full schedule on that, and then we will, you know, move afterwards to put that into consent. I don't have any cards at the moment. Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Busy morning.
So if you'd like to have the residents or the persons who submitted the card to discuss number six first?
Yeah.
Before you take a motion on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call out your name. Keep in mind, we have two podiums, please. I'm going to call up two people simultaneously, Michael Goldstein and Justin Hanlon. Hanlon? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes to speak, and the timer is back up here to our left, your right.
Hi, my name is Michael Goldstein. I live at 9770 Lego Drive in Verona Lakes. I've been there since 2001. I moved there when there was two-lane highway into a six-lane highway, and I used the protection of Armon and 441 daily. I didn't want the plaza in our residential area when it was first, when it was, when it was being sold, but it's out of our control. Now that the plaza is built, and they're asking for a drive-through restaurant. I oppose this idea because a plaza with a drive-through restaurant downgrades the appearance of an upscale plaza. Having a McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts commercializes the area, it creates chaotic atmosphere with a small plaza office space. The second thing is, there is no direct entrance and exit to 441. There's no bridge that goes over the canal to connect 441 and the plaza. There is only Armon Place and 441, as is expected to be the way the plaza was designed today. It would bring a lot of chaos in trying to get out. There is no light there at the intersection, and sometimes I find it difficult myself to make a right turn, a left turn, by making a right and making a U-turn to go left. Police are there, as of today, routinely using it as a speed trap to, and it makes it difficult to make a left. I've seen two major accidents there, and there is no street lights on 441 for early morning traffic. The last statement is, where there is a line for a location for a drive-through, is the, oh, is there people going to be backed up on the side of the residence in the parking lot, or is it going to be blocking the entrance to the plaza?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comment.
Just before you begin, if staff can have the records reflect, Commissioner Brumfield is now present? Thank you.
And can we have Lance Foreman to the right podium, please? Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Justin Hen, and I'm a property owner at 9895 Cowen Court. The entire rear side of my property line is adjacent to the east side construction of the development. In other words, I have a piece of pie property, so the entire acre has got a direct view from it. I strongly oppose the application for development amendment that would modify the original site plan, and drive-throughs have low return land use in terms of revenue it brings versus the other same land, and traffic, drive-throughs, traffic nightmare. They are potentially conflict points where crashes occur because the site is unexpected behavior, and drivers may not see pedestrians on the sidewalk. Traffic will back up, and drive-throughs are just not necessary. Their needs can be met in other such ways as curbside pickup, delivery, takeout station windows. A drive-through will have negative impacts in the air quality, idling vehicles, waiting in lines for the drive-through facility, waste gas, harm air quality, and increase greenhouse emissions, and includes, and I'm sure that anyone in this meeting would not approve of a drive-through restaurant in their backyard. I lived in my house for 34 years and treasured my privacy. With a drive-through restaurant less than 100 feet from our house brings a total lack of privacy and ability to sleep. Please do not allow the drive-through in my backyard. I'm sure the other homeowners would agree.
Thank you. And just one moment, Commissioner Brumfield, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Recusals?
No recusals.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lance Foreman, F-O-R-M-A-N, and I live in Melrose Park. I'll try to be concise. My main objection to the project allowing the drive-through is that traffic issue that it will cause. In our community, we have two exit points, one where it's located here on 441, and another one on Lyons Road. Looking at this, it looks as if there's, where the community, excuse me, the shopping center is going to be built, there's exit points from there, it's going to be very close to each other, and onto the Armon, Armon, and right where the exit is, onto 441. There's two communities that use this road to exit from primarily, and I foresee that there's going to be a traffic issue there, backlogging, and be, make it difficult to ingress egress from our community. The response is going to be, people will start using the Lyons one, which is further away, it takes longer to get to, and then that's going to backlog as well, and there are school bus stops over there with increased traffic flow, which could be, create a dangerous situation. So the objection that we have is, we want to see that there's some type of other exit point built for the shopping center, perhaps straight onto 441, or just some way that the, the situation is resolved, so traffic is controlled, so it does not backlog so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have three additional cards that do not wish to speak. Two of them talk about traffic similar to the people that have spoken, and the third one talks about traffic, road is short, two lanes, and doesn't want to affect their property value.
Okay, all right, thank you. I still feel comfortable with moving the item onto consent. If my fellow commissioners are in agreement with that, we can move the item under consent. Agenda?
Yes, like the motion to move the item to the consent agenda?
It's already on consent, do we need a motion?
No, I thought, Wendy said we had to have a motion to.
Make a motion to leave item six on consent.
If you want to leave it on consent, there's no, we already, it's still on consent, so you don't need, unless you want to pull it, then you make a motion to pull it.
Yeah.
But we will need some separate motions due to recusals.
Yeah.
So, and I need to know if you want to make a motion to move number 10 to consent or not.
Yes.
Yes, make a motion to move number 10 to consent. I got my numbers wrong, sorry.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the first motion relative to the consent is that you'll need to do a motion on items number three and number seven, due to the recusal for Commissioner Beatty.
Madam Chair, due to the recusal of one of our commissioners, I'd like to recommend approval of items number three and seven on the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine to zero, or seven, eight.
How many do we have now?
Then we have the remaining items on the consent agenda, and the one moved, which would be item number four, number five, number six, number eight, and now number 10.
Okay.
Move to approve agenda items number four, five, six, eight, and 10, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
One passed nine to zero.
All right.
Okay, so that's the end of the consent agenda.
Okay.
That'll bring us to the regular agenda, and straight into item number nine. So item number nine, ZVABNDOA 2021-01529, which is Portman Industrial MUPD. The staff report has 116 pages. Conditions are found on pages 14 through 23, as well as on our ad delete. The request before the board includes type two variants, development order abandements, development order amendments, and it, staff has multiple motions and recommendations in support of the application requests. We can turn it over to the applicant to do a presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio. On behalf of the applicant, I do have with me here today representatives from Kimley Horn in regard to any questions you may have in regards to civil traffic, environmental issues. Also, John Gaskin, the Southeast Regional Manager from Portman Industrials with us, as well as representatives from the Cellar and the Track. So that being said, I'll move forward with the presentation. The item before you today is an amendment, a development order amendment, as well as variances to the existing MUPD approval for the Maroso Motor Park Track that's located in the upper left-hand portion of the corner, about 186 acres in size, and our applicant has 174 acres under contract. The decision was made to close the track and offer it, and he was a successful bidder, so that's why we're here before you today. The uses in the area on the B-line include other industrial uses, such as the Park of Commerce, which recently, I've done a lot of work in the Park of Commerce, it was approved in 1981, and is rapidly running out of industrial land available for development. Further to the south, you also have North Palm Beach Airport, which also has subsidiary development areas for industrial as well, so this kind of creates a, creates an industrial corridor here. All right, sorry.
It's sorry. It's okay. Don't forget it. Express your sense now.
Yeah, I'm not very computer savvy. Desktop camera? That would be if I had one hotel.
Enter the event panelist numeric. You can't join the event now because it hasn't started yet. Your phone will now be disconnected.
I apologize, it was running a WebEx, and I tried to just terminate to WebEx to go straight to the presentation, and I didn't expect for this to happen, it's all my fault, sorry about that. But we're trying to get the presentation back up and running.
All right. Thank you.
Enter the event panelist numeric.
While we're waiting for our, ladies and gentlemen in the, in the lobby here, while we're waiting for this to get resolved, is there a Bruno Dole in the, in the audience? On your card, you didn't say if you wish to speak or not wish to speak. Can you clarify for me?
Local PC is right here.
Okay. So you do wish to speak or do not?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know why, why it won't show the desktop. The desktop. Why won't it make it show the desktop?
Invalid event panelist numeric password. Try again. Enter the event panelist numeric password, followed by pound.
Oh, that's what probably happened. Okay. Sometimes you have to unplug in it and unplug it.
Okay, unplugged it.
Yeah, because.
I don't know, why do you start at WebEx? It can't just go to local desktop like we complain, Commissioner?
How would you know? I'm not familiar with the system.
I wouldn't go to, no, I'm going to the.
There you go, hold on. He's in the building somewhere, let me go see.
It's not going to the PC at all, and it's not going, and you can't restart the WebEx. And it's not going to local PC.
Well, it was up, it was on the screen.
So can you start the WebEx again, then?
Yeah.
There.
It's how the WebEx works.
It's how the WebEx works. It works as a WebEx.
We're not doing WebEx.
No. All right, Lisa, we're going to get through this, girl.
Okay, this is live TV. Well, and that's the thing that I can't understand, why we can't.
Enter the event panelist numeric password.
Go to the desktop, we don't have WebEx, and we can't make WebEx.
Go away.
Local PC. Usually takes a second, I think.
Yeah. That's why sometimes it's that cable.
Yeah, unplugged it, though.
Yeah, we just need to connect this to that.
Oh.
Okay. All right, nobody touched.
square feet under development, and total cost under development of over $1 billion. It's a division of Portman Holdings, which focuses on creating value of logistics real estate in strategic markets across the United States and developing of well-located sites, with the emphasis on, obviously, multi-market logistics, transportation corridors, targeting gateway markets, the strategic inland intermodal key freight lanes serving the US supply chain, which we all know is critical, and e-commerce centers, including regional metro and facilities critical to the e-commerce system of our clients. In regards to the economic impact of the proposal on the affected area of the area under contract, we're anticipating to create 1,500 new jobs above what is currently associated with the site, with an average salary of $54,000, which is a considerable increase over the payroll right now. Impact fees and permit fees alone will be over $4 million, and the annual tax revenue associated with the development would be $3.7 million. During the economic discussions, we did reach out to the chamber and received a letter of support from them in regards to the development proposal. This gives you an idea of the layout of the property. It includes the areas with the buildings, and the water management areas are under contract. There are four access points, and what this graphic also displays is the impact of existing water bodies adjacent in the Pine Glades to the area. You'll see on the bottom of the map, which is actually the east side of the property, there is existing wetlands that encroach into the site that'll be protected. On the west side, which is the north top of the graphic, there's also existing wetlands there, canal that runs along the property that also impacts the ability to put trees in that area. So we're respecting all those natural areas, and also, we are preserving quite a bit of wetlands associated with the property. Again, the total acres of the MUPD is about 186 acres, but the area we're looking at today from a site plan approval standpoint is 174, with 2.1 million square feet of warehouse and accessory office in the four buildings. The two buildings, A and B, associated closer to the B-line will be in Phase 1, with C and D constructed in Phase 2. This gives you an idea of the current MUPD approval on the property. It was approved for approximately 400,000 square feet, includes 40,000 square feet of retail, 8,000 square feet of restaurant, warehouse, vocational school, auto body, vehicle sales, repair, and towing, manufacturing and processing. This project was approved in 2009. The site plan approved in 2015. However, it was never implemented, and the property was never platted. That request also had variances associated with it. They had numerous variances, but the one I want to focus in on the fact that they had variances 3 through 7 that eliminated the compatibility buffer, where adjacent to the Pine Glades natural area, which is also with the variances that we're requesting. That was supported at the time by ERM, and I believe there's an ERM representative here as well, due to the proximity to the Pine Glades natural area and the concern of installing additional material that close to the property lines and the control burns they have over Get into the variance now, which this body is the regulatory approval decision-maker on that, and I'll run through those. We do have support for all of them. I do want to talk about one condition that we would like to ask for your consideration for potentially amending. First, and some of these, I do want to point out, some of these variances were not required during the last development order, but over time, they've been recognized in the code that they actually are, probably should have been required. And the first one we're asking for is cross-access. The Planning Division and the Zoning Division for MUPDs typically require that you provide cross-access vehicular and pedestrian to adjacent properties where possible and feasible. In this case, obviously, we do not want to provide cross-access from this property to the Pine Glades natural area, so that is the first variances we're speaking to, and applies just to the area that was on that prior side. There are also requirements in the code in regards to screening loading and storage areas. The Zoning Division has recently determined that parking of trailers is considered outdoor storage as well, so in abundance of caution, we are asking for those variances as well to screen, to not have a screen from the natural area. And then, the area on the top of your screen there is actually an access point for an existing road right-of-way that comes off the B-line. We will provide screening up to where the point is of the red dots, but there's an existing wetland in that area that serves as screening, and the area that's green is actually going to be a water management dry retention area. And there were concerns, the main concern from staff was vehicles traveling south, which would be to your left on the screen, might be able to see that area. That's our variance is being supported by staff, ideally because there's very few existing uses of Spartacular to the north of that right-of-way, one other development parcel, but we will be improving the roadway up to that access point. This just goes into the actual details of the verbiage of the variance in that manner. Compatibility buffer variance. We broke our variances, unlike the prior approval, into compatibility buffer variances and right-of-way buffer variances. This area here is the compatibility buffer. You'll see that we actually have water bodies existing along that property line that will be retained with the site development, and we have support from staff on that regard. Again, this just verbalizes the actual request. The second part is the right-of-way buffer variances. That was not requested by the prior developer, but there are actually rights of way, old platted rights of way, that join these red lines depicted on the screen. There is also a condition of approval in our development order that was included in the prior development order that requires our applicant to quit claim over all rights they may ever have in those right-of-ways, because obviously, they're under the conservation easement and will never be developed. The one condition we would like to ask for some consideration from this commission is in regards to the buffer variances. Staff has included a condition that would require us to basically calculate all the trees and palms that would be in that entire buffer area and place them on-site. We would like to propose that we be able to calculate that and replace 50% of them on-site. We're actually preserving a lot of trees in a lot of those areas that will serve as a buffer, while they're not actually in that buffer width area. They will serve that purpose. We're proposing right now to preserve approximately 691 of those trees, and we're also adding 556 mitigation trees, for a total of almost 1,250 trees. So this would still supplement it by 50% of the required amount, which we feel is more than adequate, and still serve the purpose of providing buffering along the property line and internal to the project. Outdoor storage, I'd mentioned earlier. Again, that area where the variance is shown, we are providing the six-foot wall, but it was the concern about the visibility traveling south, so we're asking that that area adjacent to the dry retention and the wetland not be required to install screening. In regards to the variances, staff has reviewed them, and they are in support of all of them and the justification that we provided. In regards to access, I know this is always an important item. There is typically, there is currently seven curb cuts to this property. We will be reducing them from seven to four. Right-hand turn lanes will be provided at all our access points, and left-hand turn lanes are provided at the easternmost and the main entrance. These have all been reviewed by Palm Beach County Engineering as well as FDOT, and we will also be posting a bond, as was required previously, at the main entrance, and that'll be assessed over time, and if required, a signal would be installed. We did reach out as well to Jupiter Farms. We, I spoke to Matt Gitkin over there. They spoke to ERM as well regarding buffering and their concerns with the fire break, so they ended up having no objection to the request. In summary, we are asking for the abandonment, the development orders, the variances, including consideration of potentially amending that one condition regarding the trees in the buffer and the control name change. That would conclude my presentation. I know there's a lot of comments, cards entered. I would request that we have the ability to respond to any questions or items brought up by the public, and of course, we're available, including our entire team, for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Staff?
Good morning, Chair, and members of the zoning commission. Timothy Hanks of the Zoning Division. I would like to thank the applicant for a very thorough presentation. I'll go over some of the key components of the request while providing a little more detail regarding the staff analysis for the items previously discussed. As stated, the application before you is for the Portman Industrial Development on the site formerly known as Maroso Motorsports Park MUPD. The overall site area consists of 186.38 acres. The subject site is located on the north side of B-line Highway, approximately a mile west of Pratt and Whitney Road. As previously stated, the site does have a few different land uses associated, being commercial high, industrial, and also, commercial recreation. The applicant is determining to utilize the IND future land use for the requested use. There are several subsequent requests that are a part of this application, which include Type 2 variances to eliminate the cross-access, compatibility buffer, the right-of-way buffer, along with the loading area and outdoor storage screening, along with a development order abandonment to abandon the previous requested uses, including an arena, auditorium, or stadium, indoor and outdoor entertainment, auto paint and body, convenience store with gas sales, manufacturing and processing, and vehicle sales and rental, and an electronic message center, and an alternative sign plan. There is also included a development order amendment to reconfigure the site plan, delete and modify uses, and modify the conditions of approval. The request to amend the previously approved MUPD, the site plan indicates the inclusion of a 2,118,196 square foot of total building area, of which 2,29,636 square feet will consist of warehouse space, 88,560 square feet of accessory office space will be included, four accessory, four warehouse buildings, as previously stated. Building A containing a total of 145,599 square feet, of which 131,000 square feet will consist of warehouse space, and 14,560 will consist of accessory office square footage. Building B will also contain a total of 241,371 square feet of total building area with 217,000 of warehouse space and 24,000 square feet of accessory office. Building C will consist of 811,343 square feet, which will have 786,000 of warehouse space and 25,000 accessory office space square footage. And Building D containing almost nearly a million square feet of total building area with 894,883 square feet of warehouse space and 25,000 square feet of accessory office. There's also proposed 1,445 regular parking spaces, along with 415 loading spaces and 450 trailer spaces for the outdoor storage. We've already discussed the three entrance and access points from B-line Highway, with another entrance and an access point on the western property line. The amendments will take place on all but 12 acres of the overall MUPD, excluding the 12 acres containing what is referred to as the Gilco parcel. This 12-acre site is currently owned by Gilco One Racing LLC and will remain as previously approved on the 2009 development order. Staff is proposing a condition of approval that will require the applicant to revise the site plan to include the previously approved 87,000 square feet of intensity. And as you can see, some of the building square footages and uses are displayed on the bottom left of your screen. The snippet does include the location for the Gilco parcel, along with the previously approved site plan with the buildings' locations and square footages. As you saw from the applicant's presentation, this is the previously approved site plan, which does indicate a total of 400,000 square feet of building area. I'll try to briefly go over some of these variance requests as previously discussed. Variance 1 and 2 relate to cross-access to the adjacent properties for the Pine Glades natural area. Variance 3A and 3B request to eliminate the loading area screening. Variance 4, and 4A and 4B request to eliminate the compatibility buffers, and 5A through 5C to eliminate the perimeter right-of-way buffering. And Variance 7 is to eliminate the requirement for the outdoor storage screening areas. So here's just some of the locations. You saw similar slides from the applicant's presentation, Variance 1 and 2 to eliminate the cross-access to the adjacent...
consist of warehouse space, 88,560 square feet of accessory office space will be included, four accessory, four warehouse buildings as previously stated. Building A containing a total of 145,599 square feet, of which 131,000 square feet will consist of warehouse space, and 14,560 will consist of accessory office square footage. Building B will also contain a total of 241,371 square feet of total building area with 217,000 of warehouse space and 24,000 square feet of accessory office. Building C will consist of 811,343 square feet, which will have 786,000 of warehouse space and 25,000 accessory office space square footage. And Building D containing almost nearly a million square feet of, of total building area with 894,883 square feet of warehouse space and 25,000 square feet of accessory office. There are, there's also proposed 144, 1,445 regular parking spaces, along with 415 loading spaces and 450 trailer spaces for the outdoor storage. We've already discussed the three entrance and access points from Beeline Highway with another entrance and an access point on the western property line. The amendments will take place on all but 12 acres of the overall MUPD, excluding the 12 acres containing what is referred to as the Gilco parcel. This 12-acre site is currently owned by Gilco One Racing LLC and will remain as previously approved on the 2009 development order. Staff is proposing a condition of approval that will require the applicant to revise the site plan to include the previously approved 87,000 square feet of intensity. And as you can see, some of the building square footages and uses are displayed on the bottom left of your screen. The snippet does include the location for the Gilco parcel, along with the previously approved site plan with the buildings' locations and square footages. As you saw from the applicant's presentation, this is the previously approved site plan, which does indicate a total of 400,000 square feet of building area. I'll try to briefly go over some of these variance requests as previously discussed. Variance is one and two relate to cross-access to the adjacent properties for the Pine Glades natural area. Variance 3A and 3B request to eliminate the loading area screening. Variance four and, 4A and 4B request to eliminate the compatibility buffers. And 5A through 5C are to eliminate the perimeter right-of-way buffering. And variance seven is to eliminate the requirement for the outdoor storage screening areas. So here's just some of the locations. You saw similar slides from the applicant's presentation, variance one and two to eliminate the cross-access to the adjacent Pine Glades natural areas. Variance is 3A and 3B to eliminate the loading area screening on the west, northwest, north, and eastern property lines. Variance is 4A and 4B as it relates to compatibility buffers. There is a compatibility buffer provided on the western portion of the unincluded vacant parcel, but the applicant is requesting to eliminate the majority of the compatibility buffer screening on the west and north property lines of that vacant, unincluded site. The variance request for 5A through 5C are to eliminate the right-of-way buffering as proposed. There is a 20-foot right-of-way buffer that is provided along Beeline Highway and a 15-foot right-of-way buffer on the western property line as required. And variance seven is to, once again, eliminate the outdoor storage. Staff has reviewed, has reviewed the request and finds that there are special circumstances and conditions that are procured to the site, being that the overall development area is nearly encompassed by Pine Glades natural area, along with perimeter wetlands and natural area buffers. It is important to note that on page six of the staff report and under standard B for variances one and two, it should say that there are special circumstances and conditions that do not result as an action of the applicant, as there are natural environmental areas surrounding the site. There are also unique circumstances and conditions. And staff believes that the variance request will allow for the reasonable development without significantly impacting the currently existing natural areas. As such, staff is recommending, is in support of the seventh variance request and is recommending approval subject to conditions. Additionally, I'd like to add that there are existing perimeter bufferings along the site that consist of 50-foot natural areas, along with the canal, that will provide for sufficient screening of any uses that take place on site. At the time of publication, staff has received four contacts from the public regarding this application, with one phone call in opposition, two emails in opposition, and one email requesting additional information about the application. And some of the concerns in opposition came from advocates for the racetrack who didn't want to see the use changed. And also, there were concerns for a loss of tourism and the iconic racetrack itself, and also some concerns with illegal street racing that would come at the loss of the racetrack. As of 5:30 PM last, last evening, we did receive some more emails in opposition up till 8:31 this morning, and staff is filing them. And from what we've assessed so far, they seem, they appeared mostly to be in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending still approval of the type-two variance requests, variance V1 through V7, subject to conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibit C. Staff is also recommending approval of the, of the development order amendment to reconfigure the site plan, to delete and modify uses, and modify the conditions of approval, subject to the conditions as indicated in Exhibit C2 and Exhibit C3. This concludes staff's presentation. If you have any, any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, we'll move to comments from the public.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, as I call out your name, please approach one of the podiums, either your left or right. Keep in mind, you have two minutes. There is a clock back here on the wall, to my left, your right, for two minutes. We try to allow everyone a chance to speak today. First are going to be up is Jeffrey Burke and Bruno Dunnett, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me.
I'm just a lowly assistant.
Okay. I'm even lower. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Burke and I reside at 9521 59th Court North in Jupiter Farms. And first of all, I'd like to thank the staff. Tim has been very helpful in providing updates and information and I appreciate you. Thank you. I'm here in opposition and I'm not going to talk about the personal reasons because of what the racetrack means to me. I've been racing there 50 years. And I'm not going to talk about that because that's not really the point of this board meeting today. We're going to talk on the petition and its merits or lack thereof. And there are a couple of things that really stand out to me when Mr. Portman, where are you, whatever, can come in and suggest that he's going to take our ULDC and, you know, we're going to forget about setbacks, we're going to get variances on borders, and we're going to do this surrounded by an environmentally sensitive wetland that the county bought to preserve. So you mean to tell me this is the place where you have variances on setbacks? That's crazy. The building setback on the west side is going to be less than the building setback for my home in Jupiter Farms on two and a half acres. This is insane. So, and there's the broader issue of water. And we all need to be focused on water. Why? Our population is burgeoning. Our, our ability and capacity to produce potable drinking water for the population is always a precarious balance. These wetlands were acquired to protect our water resources. And in the future, I see this becoming a real problem as we grow and, you know, we're taking a couple of million square feet, converting it to concrete, impervious surface area. That water's just running off.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
There were a couple other things I wanted to say.
I understand, but we have to limit everybody's time today.
All right. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your applause till the end or, you know, comments to yourselves, please. We're just going to try and move through these so everyone has a chance to speak today. Bruno, to one podium, please, and Bob Rikler, Riller, to the other podium, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Bruno Doucet. I live in 4301 Oak Circle in Boca Raton. I've been using the track for barely a year and see the community around the track grow on me. So I'm obviously here in the position of this development. I haven't prepared really any talk, but what I can see is that I'm against the, it's for the economic growth of the region. I see all the small businesses here that are hiring people, that are bringing a great economy to West Palm Beach, and I don't want to see a big Walmart or next Bezos bring supposedly 1,500 jobs that they say is going to bring $55,000 salary per year, which we know is totally wrong. Those, those people don't make this kind of money. So what I'm trying to say here is that the track right now brings a substantial economy by all the small business that buys houses, that hires people, that employs a lot of people, and then makes the county grow better than a warehouse who's going to bring, unfortunately, smaller employees that are not going to be able to afford houses, that are not going to make the economy of West Palm Beach growing. So that's what I see right now. And I'm defending all the small businesses that are trying to fight this billion-dollar company that is trying to ruin all the small businesses that are here. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please, no applause. Please, if I have to ask again, I'm going to have you removed from the room. Please, no applause. Kevin Coyle to the podium. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. My name is Bob Ricker. I'm the regional executive for Florida Region Sports Car Club of America. We're the largest car club in the United States. We, I have been going to Palm Beach International Raceway since it was built in 1964, '65. We support the area by running events that fill hotel rooms and other forms of Congress in this, in the county. The secondary thing is if we eliminate the racetrack, we will have no place for people to go, go drag racing or road racing legally. It's going to be done on the public streets like it was done when I was a kid. I think this would be a setback to how we do things and the next closest opportunity for anybody in this area to legally drag race is all the way down at Homestead Miami Speedway or over in Fort Myers, which is a long way to go when you get two kids out on the road at night saying, "Let's go at it." They can go out to Palm Beach, have their fun safely, and go home safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deborah Coyle to the podium, please. Yes, sir.
Good morning, folks. My name's Kevin Coyle. I'm at 145249, 63rd Place, Loxahatchee. 62-year-old native of Palm Beach County, so I've seen a lot of growth, some of it positive, some of it not so positive. I oppose this rezoning of the track. I too have been visiting the track for 42, 43 years. I just watched the presentation, had a lot of nice pictures and stuff and stats and everything about what the proposal will bring to Palm Beach County. But what the presentation doesn't address is the public safety issue this will create when we lose the track. As mentioned before, street racing's rampant across the nation. We watch our tracks disappear one at a time to corporate America. So the other, the other thing I want to bring up is the impact to our local businesses. Proposal says it'll create 1,500 jobs. That pales in comparison to what we'll lose in small businesses. Everything from mechanics to merchants that sell parts and fuel and everything else wasn't taken into consideration in the proposal. That being said, I support Rick Bradshaw's opinion on it too. He opposes this also. Basically, all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Debbie.
One second, ma'am. Tyler, Tyler Glock, please, to the podium. Go ahead, Ms. Deborah.
Okay. My name is Debbie Coyle. I also was born here, Good Samaritan Hospital, and raised here and have seen a lot of change in our county. I imagine when each of you were up for election, you made promises to us as individuals in Palm Beach County. I oppose this rezoning for multiple reasons. And mainly, one, because of the small business impact. You cannot buy racing gas at Wawa. You cannot buy nitrous at Walmart. Racing tires are not at Tire Kingdom. And you don't buy racing engines at Advance Auto Parts. And the list goes on of the small businesses that support our racing community. We heard about the jobs that the rezoning will create. $54,000 sounds really good. The people working at the convenience stores and the gas station and the people part-time at the arena that are only working for events are not going to be making $54,000. $54,000 is not a livable wage in Palm Beach County. You cannot rent or buy a home. This is very close to Martin County. I think most of these jobs will probably be filled by people in Martin County and not Palm Beach Gardens or Palm Beach County citizens. It is, if you live in Riviera Beach, it is 18 miles to get out there to get a job. That's 9,000 miles a year. Let's talk about environmental, environmental impact of 1,491 cars going on the beeline to and from work. That's 3,000 trips a day of exhaust and fumes and gas being used to go out to these new jobs being created. We already know about the safety hazards and the deaths and injuries that are going to happen due to street racing. And knowingly, deliberately, and voting for this rezoning, knowing that the safety of your residents count on you to preserve this racetrack. Thank you.
Joseph Rayner?
How you doing? My name's Tyler Glock. Thank you for having me here today. So I'm just going to start. The woman introducing the plan today said, "We are rapidly running out of industrial land in our area." She said, "Rapidly developing remaining land." That's true. We are running out of land. I'm glad we agree on that. So I haven't heard the word park mentioned today. You know, it's actually, it's actually considered, you know, it was called Maroso Motorsports Park, you know, which is kind of ironic because there's another project on the table for another motorsports park called 20 Mile Bend. I'm sure you all have heard of it. And, you know, a lot of people have been working really hard to get that space designated for an area so people can have motorsports, you know? But here we are, literally rezoning a property that's zoned for motorsports, for recreational use, and letting it happen to a company that, to companies like Walmart and Amazon, you know? They have more employees on Medicaid than any other single company in the United States. You know who pays for that? We do. You know? And you save $55,000 a year for jobs, you know? What about, what about, what about the fact that, you know, Amazon won't allow their employees to unionize? You know, we have small businesses here that take care of each other, you know? It's wild. And the last thing I'll tell you is a personal story, okay? Because I, I'm a recovering addict, you know? And, and the truth of the matter is, I wanted to do something with my life. And you know what kept me away from drugs? You know what was the first thing that I was super interested in in the drive? Was going to Maroso and racing my car. That's what I did. That kept me out of trouble, you know? This is more than just a place for people to go fast. This, this kind of place changes lives. It brings families together. It gives us something to do. Not a warehouse. A warehouse that's going to like completely do what? Build it 30 miles out west. It's to save money. It's to save a bottom dollar for a large corporation and y'all are going to allow that while you destroy what we love. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Next, it's going to be William Agwalon. Go ahead, sir.
Joseph Rayner, 5440 Wallace Road, West Palm Beach. 186 acres. While that sounds relatively unimportant, these 186 acres employ people of this community and feed local businesses. These 186 acres have built bonds between fathers and sons and like-minded individuals for decades. A quick search on a Realtor app revealed 88 listings in Florida for lots with up to 200 acres. They could have purchased a 200-acre lot anywhere. Why here? This is only one of, this is one of only six tracks in the U.S. that is built completely of concrete. Given that info, this is one of the top 10 tracks in America for motorsports and top five according to local racers. What is the opportunity cost of this warehouse-type facility for Portman Industrial? Portman Holdings was sued by Seacliff Limited, a company that they formed an asset management agreement with due to breach of contract indemnification and breach of fiduciary duty. Seacliff alleges that they lost millions, and now here comes Portman to a new territory attempting to buy up this historic property. Their annual revenues between 1 to 10 million, but how much do we place on a life loss due to the increase of illegal street racing? The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that there were 149,568 fatal crashes. 315 of those were street racing-related, of which 399 fatalities resulted. That's 84 innocent bystanders. Annual revenue for this historic racetrack is 5.1 million and could exceed well over that if granted FIA Grade II certification, which would allow IndyCar Series, Grand Am, and other major forms of racing. According to Forbes, IndyCar Series and Indianapolis Motor Speedway sponsorship deals now generate some 25 million per year, and this is just for the IndyCar Series. The Grand Am Series with Rolex Series would generate even more. And Daytona Speedway generates 1.9 billion annually, and Daytona Speedway is built with asphalt. It's not even a top 10 track.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Your time is up. Sherman Chao? Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is William Agayong. It's a difficult name to pronounce, but I am a longtime resident of Palm Beach County. I live in Jupiter Farms, 15359. I live in Jupiter Farms, 15354, 105th Drive North. I'm also a retired Palm Beach County Deputy Sheriff, thirty-two years. I can tell you, I worked for many years in that area where the track is located, Alpha sixteen, Alpha seventeen at the time, and I made a lot of friends. I knew a lot of the people that went to that area, frequented that, that area, and a lot of the racers. I, myself, have been a racer for years. I have used the drag strip. I have used the road course, motorcycles and cars for many, many years. So I work in that area. I can tell you that there's, there's going to be, for the public safety, there's going to be a lot of street racing, not just in Palm Beach County, but in the adjacent counties, Broward, Martin County, Dade. Because the one track that everybody's going to be, that has been using safely is going to be gone. Fort Myers, Orlando, Homestead will be the closest venues that people will be able to go to in order to go legally race. Unfortunately, you know, when you've got two young males in motorcycles or in cars, and they have all this adrenaline and testosterone, and instead of saying, hey, let's meet up Friday night at the track, and let's go at it, let's rate, compare machines, they're going to take it upon themselves to race on the street. It's not just going to affect Palm Beach County, it's going to affect the adjacent counties as well. Unfortunately, this is going to bring a lot, bring a lot of carnage and a lot of accidents in Palm Beach County. My, I also support Sheriff Bradshaw, my former boss, in this. He knows that it's a, a big giant safety issue. It's going to be an issue when, if this is, this proposal is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jeffrey Gilroy to the podium?
Good morning. My name is Sherman Chow. I'm a resident of Palm Beach County. And unlike many other speakers, I am a relatively recent, I guess, resident to the county coming about ten years ago. What I wanted to speak about was not the economic impacts for the local business people. You'll hear more about that. What I, what I wanted to mention was a notion that what we have with Palm Beach International Raceway is the opportunity for a socially wider, diverse activity for people such as myself. I have met, in the last ten years, people I would not have met who are now my friends because of my racing activity. Without that racing activity, my opportunities to race would still exist. I would go other places, but I would not have the interactions with the local residents and, and in Palm Beach County that I currently enjoy. And quite frankly, that is what's keeping me from moving outside of Palm Beach County. We know that the cost of living is going higher and higher, and there is going to be movement outside if the quality of life deteriorates. And what binds Palm Beach County, I think, is the cultural diversity that we have, not just because of the people, but because of the activities. We know about the beaches. We know about the parks. We know about the other recreational activities that are offered in Palm Beach County. How many other counties in Florida, let alone the U.S., offer the opportunity to have motorsports activity that brings people of wide, wide economic strata and cultural diversity? That is something that's very unique to motorsports. If you, I can't stress how important that is. So is that my time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Jerry Pellegrino to the podium, please.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Gilroy. I live at 245 Moccasen Trail West, Jupiter, Florida. I was born in Jupiter. I'm twenty-one years old. In addition to going to the racetrack, which is something my friends and I, you know, enjoy a lot, I'm also very active with local car meets. It brings, as many people have said, you know, people from all walks of life together. And I've met a lot of people, and I care about them. And to think that the racetrack could possibly close and that some of the people that I know and care about could fall victim to, you know, the consequences of illegal street racing, either, you know, and nobody wants to think that people will break the law, but either doing it themselves or, you know, being an innocent bystander is, you know, is unbearable to me. And furthermore, I mean, as of yet, no average citizen has come up here and said, you know, I really want those warehouses, I, you know? Everybody has been in support of the racetrack. Point being, there's really more to lose by building these warehouses than there is to gain because lives are at stake. No lives are going to be saved if these warehouses are built, but if we keep the track, lives are definitely going to be saved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to the podium is going to be Kathleen Dubey, I hope. Yeah, very pretty handwriting. I just can't read, read the last name. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Jerry Pellegrino. I reside in North Palm Beach, Florida. In nineteen eighty-four, I was in Connecticut and racing motorcycles. Season was over. Somebody said, there's a winter series in Florida. I came for a weekend race at Maroso Motorsports Park, and I never went back. Still here. I started an environmental business. Been going for thirty-two years. I employ fifteen people. I started, I retired in nineteen ninety, started racing again in two thousand nineteen. Since that time, I've purchased nine motorcycles, one RV, two trailers, one shop in Jupiter. I spent seventeen thousand dollars in two years on the bikes. Three leather suits, four helmets. For each race that I go to at Palm Beach, I stop for fuel for the RV, fuel for the bikes, food, ice, LP gas for the RV. It just doesn't make sense that we can put a warehouse anywhere. Why would you take this track away? And the upcoming racers that I've watched, now that I'm older, the people who are making it to Moto America on the big screen, some of them going to Europe, it all starts at Palm Beach International Raceway. When they're thirteen years old, that's where they start. They grow into big-time racers. Without this track, that's all going to stop. And do we want to cave to the corporate greed, or do we want to serve the thousands of residents and workers in Palm Beach County? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next to the podium is going to be Mark Ward. Kathleen?
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Dempsey, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement with the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. We're at 5520 PJ Boulevard in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here today on behalf of the Chamber in support of the Portman Industrial Project. The Palm Beach North Chamber covers ten municipalities, serving six hundred fifty businesses that employ forty-five thousand-plus people. The Chamber is in support of this project because of the economic impact it will have on the Palm Beach North region. Portman Industrial is going to develop a first-class logistics park that will create over fifteen hundred permanent full-time jobs. This project will also generate over three point seven million dollars annually in tax revenues for the county, as well as generate one-time permit and impact fees exceeding four million dollars. I want to thank you for your time this morning, and we hope that you will consider supporting this project that will have a positive impact to our region. Thank you.
Peter Shadowden?
I'm Mark Ward.
Mark Ward, okay.
Thank you for your time this morning. I'm not even sure where to begin. I'll spend a little bit of time on environmental impact. That property, if we have that slide back up, is really the only dry area for those wetlands. And so when we have an extreme rain flooding condition, that's the only dry place that the wildlife can go and be out, be out of the rain. So the, it's been that way for fifty, sixty years. The, the racing is only going on, you know, Friday evenings, Wednesdays, some weekends. The rest of the time is pretty quiet there, and the wildlife does come in and go out. The last thing would be the, the economic impact. With the equestrian industry, if we were making a change like this, there would be studies that are done. And I haven't heard anything, any county studies to really analyze the equestrian, I mean, the environmental, economic impact of losing the racetrack. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is going to be Malcolm Butlerz.
Good morning. My name is Peter Shadowen. I'm a lifetime resident of Palm Beach County, born at St. Mary's Hospital. I've been using the racetrack for many years. Would not like to see it go, so I definitely oppose this. I am one of the small shop owners that has been talked about. I employ approximately six people at various times, and we've been in business for over twenty years with our basis of our service, servicing the people that support and use the track. I'm not sure how our business will go if the track goes. I'm sure those customers will still race, they just won't be as frequently, which means they will not come see us as often. The loss of revenue for Palm Beach County, I don't know if anyone has done a study. I know there's studies on what the revenue will be for the warehouse, but what will the actual loss of revenue be from taxes and purchases and whatnot in Palm Beach County from all the associated things that go with the racing that you've heard a few of the other people speak about? Other than that, I think that's about all I have to say. Hopefully, there's some other small businesses here that will also express their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Brown is next up. Sir?
Yes, I'm Malcolm Butters. I'm a Palm Beach County resident, and I know I'm going to be a minority here today, but I'm here in support of the Portman development. I recognize there's a lot of passionate people here today, probably several hundred, that are, they're in favor of keeping the racetrack, but I also represent the average person, the other million-plus residents of Palm Beach County that need this facility. This, this facility, first of all, Portman's a very high-quality, one of the highest-quality developers in Palm Beach, in the United States, so Palm Beach County is very lucky to have them as a developer. It's a strategic location and one of the few places that we could put major distribution centers. As you know, and I was actually, item number three on the consent agenda, we developed Small Bay Industrial. Small Bay fits perfectly into most of the industrial parcels near the ag reserve, and that's how we were able to do our developments because we create smaller industrial that caters to plumbers and carpenters and, and that type of facility. But what the Portman guys want to do, which is a distinguishing factor, they want to create major distribution centers, which we need and which are, we are not going to put in the ag reserve. And this is a great facility. It's out in northwest Palm Beach County. It's not near any major residential, and, and I think there's no land for this in the east. So this is a critical piece of land. It's, these facilities are critical to the supply chain. When we have a pandemic or a hurricane and we need to feed the public or have water or toilet paper, it comes out of facilities like these. It doesn't come out of facilities like mine. And we're not going to have them at a small, older facilities along I-95. So I'm here to support it. We're a growing community. I love this country. We get to all talk our minds, but this land is zoned industrial, and it belongs here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? Good morning. My name is Thomas Brown. I live in Loxahatchee. I actually moved to Palm Beach to be closer to this racetrack. If this racetrack leaves, I'll probably leave, too. And all of us vote, and we'll remember this, no matter what happens here today. My dad used to race, and he died when I was six months old. He didn't get to teach me or go with me or do any racing with me. I have five kids. My seventeen-year-old daughter just started driving one of my old cars at the track, and my nine-year-old son is going to be driving a junior dragster there. At least, that's what we plan on. We have to have a track rental for him to go do it so that he's not with a big crowd, and he'll feel more comfortable, but this is the safe way to do this. That guy was just saying that this is a prime location. It is for a racetrack. It's been a racetrack for sixty years. If nothing else, it should be declared a historical monument. Records have been broken at this track. I can't even believe that we're here discussing the sale of this place to become warehouses. It's, it's just mind-blowing that someone would even consider this. I, I don't know what you guys are thinking, but please, don't let this happen, because if this happens, you're going to ruin a lot of people's futures by it not being there. Warehouses, they're, they're, they could put that crap anywhere. It's nonsense that they're telling you that they can't put it anywhere else. They could put it anywhere else they want to, and fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred jobs? I don't believe it. It's all going to be automated. They're full of crap. Thank you, and remember, we vote.
Can I just, just before the next speaker comes up, I just want a clarification on the commissioners that are sitting up here. We are not voted into our current positions. The Board of County Commissioners are, we are appointed. So I just want to make sure for the record, okay? And volunteer. So as you are here giving your time for community, so are we, okay? Thank you. Can we hit the next speaker?
Eve Calcango, Cal Congo, to one podium, please, and Gary Canty to the other podium, please.
Okay. My turn. My name's Evie Calcanyo. This is my husband. A lot of you guys already know him. We do live in Loxahatchee. I'm going to represent my family today. We obviously oppose this. I personally have been going to the track for thirty-five years myself, and now my family races. My husband is a race car driver. Our two kids, we have five of them, two of them are drivers, and the rest of them help tune cars. My daughter, who's nineteen, actually did all of the computer work in our cars before she left to go to the Navy this year earlier. Our seventeen-year-old drives a nineteen-seventy Dart. Our nine-year-old son will drive a junior dragster. Both of them really, really begged to be here with us today, but we told them that school was more important, and they had testing, so they're in school. It's very emotional for me. We actually moved here, like he said, to be close to the track so that we could do this as a family. There's not a lot of people that spend time with their kids. All their kids go off and do something else, and the parents go out and do their own thing. They go to dinner or whatever. We spend all of our money here in Palm Beach County as residents. It's a way of life for many people in this area. There's just a fraction of us here today voicing our opinions. If this change and application goes through, there's going to be a lot of loss here in Palm Beach County. Small businesses, they help facilitate racing, purchase of fuel, parts, labor. If the application passes, it's going to take away a safe place for our children to race at. We don't want to see them getting hurt or killed on the highway or on the street. I have two petitions myself with over eight thousand signatures on one and ten thousand on another opposing this change. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Do you have those petitions with you?
I, they're all online. Yep, I do.
Were they submitted to the staff?
I, I don't know. Can we do that?
See what you got to do to get them submitted.
I'm sorry?
I mean, if they're digital, she could email them in, but I don't know that they'd be part of the, today's proceeding. If they could be part of the BCC, I mean, if we don't have them, I don't know. That's a legal question.
Right. I think the commission would need to see the document that they're receiving into the record.
We can have them forward, reported and for BCC.
Evie, print them out and be ready for BCC.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. There's other petitions out there, over twenty thousand that I know of.
Okay. Well, if you, you can follow up and find out the correct procedure, all right, so that they are submitted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gary, yes?
My name's Mark Weithold. There was a group of four people. We have a consecutive presentation. The person you have next is?
The person I have next is. The person I have next is Charles Devek.
What about Gary?
Devek. I'm just reading the cards as they were presented, guys. You have a consecutive presentation?
I put, because you won't allow anybody to give me their time, I put four cards in right after each other, and we will go right after each other. If you could allow that to happen, would be appreciated.
And can you give me the four names outside of yourself, or three names outside of yourself?
My name is Mark Weinthal. Gary?
Hang on, hang on. I got to find the cards, okay?
Okay. Gary, which is who I took the place of.
And I'm sorry, what was your name?
Mark, M-A-R-C, last name Weinthal, W-I-N-T-H-A-L.
All right.
Myron.
All right.
And Clemente.
And you are, sir?
I'm Charles Devek.
Okay.
I'm with him also.
I'm going to let you go first.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to bring up to everybody here, I've been working out at Maroso for 31 years. I am the announcer out there. I meet everybody out there, families who would never believe that, how much fun they have out there. We got to take a little look at this. We got to get this place straightened out to where we can bring our families out and race, like they all said, junior dragsters. They start at eight years old, and they learn to competition. They learn to put things together to make that track. They have opportunities to grow with this program, and people that want to take this and turn it into a warehouse, take family away from what they love to do. I'll ask each and every one of you, if your kids play football, soccer, baseball, or go to the county park and go there, and you come to find out they're putting a warehouse out there, it's not kosher, right? You'll never do that to a county park, would you? You'd never take a football guy, a child that wants to play football, and take that away from them? That's the same thing as this. This is a group, family. I could tell you now, there's about six or seven people out here. I watched them grow up in the last 30 years, running from high school, junior dragsters. Some of these people have gone into the top fuelers because they learned basically from the start, eight years old, and this gives the family an opportunity to bring them together. They do it daily. I've been out there, like I said, and I have a son that's been out there the same amount of time, 31 years, and we've seen everybody out there grow. There's tons of families out there, each and every weekend we race, and I know 90% of them. They have been there, they love the racing. It's just like if your kids played baseball, would you take that from them, totally away from them, because that's what you're doing? Give you another idea.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. I appreciate your time today. Thank you. All right, so Mark and Gary, please. Gary Conti.
Clemente is going to go after me, then Myron, and then Gary. Hopefully, we'll get it done, or you could just let me read it all myself. Your choice.
The chairwoman said two minutes per person and no delegation of time, sir.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Mark Weinthal. My address is 3111 Forty-Fifth Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33407. I own and operate Marie Speed &amp; Custom, an 83-year-old company that's been doing business in West Palm Beach since 2004. I'm here to speak out against granting the variance, the development order, and abandonment related to the request to allow Palm Beach International Raceway to be destroyed. I plan on pointing out the legal shortcomings in the application, and will show what the county will lose if Palm Beach International Raceway is allowed to be destroyed. I'm focusing on the abandonment and amendment requests as they are the main issue. Zoning map amendment, Article 2B, 7B, 2B, Title Standards of the Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, requires the applicant to meet all certain standards and states that the application will fail to meet any of these standards and shall be deemed adverse to the public interest and will not be approved. Section 2B, 7B, 2B, Section 8, Title Consistency with the Current Site Approval, states the proposed use and amendment inconsistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of the plan include standards of building, structures, intensities and densities, and intent of use. I believe the purpose of the goal of this code is to allow an icon community not to be destroyed. Thousands of people will lose their livelihoods, an historical place that we can legally race, and will continue to reduce street racing and accidents and deaths. Article 2B, 7B, 2B, Section 8 of the code, title, change, conditions, circumstances, state, there are demonstrated changes in the conditions or circumstances provided by the applicant's justified statement that necessitates a modification. The applicant attempts to justify the stating of the application has determined that increased consumer demand on online purchases necessitates the need for more warehouses.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, how you guys doing? My name is Clemente Travieso, West Palm Beach, Florida, born and raised here. To continue on, the site has operated as a raceway since 1965. There are no demonstrated site conditions or circumstances that justify the applicant's statements. The applicants have not demonstrated any hardship. Their concerns would be self-created and perceived solely by the applicant. The applicant entered into contract to purchase the site knowing it has been used as a raceway since 1965. The site conditions have remained the same for close to 60 years. There are no site condition changes or circumstances warranting the destruction of the raceway. It is important to preserve the raceway, those who enjoy the facility and make their living servicing its needs. This, currently Florida registration session alone, is considering three separate bills to combat street racing in our state, Senate Bill 258, Senate Bill 876, and House Bill 399. The bill's sponsors for this bill are from the major metropolitan areas such as Broward, Dayton, Hillsborough County. What do these counties have in common? They do not have a strip for people to safely drag race at. I am not saying we do not have street racing in our county. I am sure the Palm Beach County Sheriff and multiple municipal police chiefs can pull data supporting this statement, but what I am saying, if the raceway is destroyed, Palm Beach County, similar to the other metropolitan counties, will have larger street racing problems. People will be injured, people will be killed, and this could be prevented. The applicant cannot claim a hardship or change conditions. They knowingly entered into a contract to purchase a property that has been used for the same manner for 60 years. There is no change in conditions or circumstances of the site. That is, I'm sorry, that the site necessitates this. Destroying this landmark will financially impact thousands. Livelihoods will be lost, businesses will close, warehousing with automation and minimum minimum wage jobs will not be able to replace those livelihoods. Go ahead and cut it. Thank you, that's my time.
Thank you, sir. I believe you're Gary?
I'm Myron Sculte.
Myron?
I live in Lake Worth, Florida, 1322 North K Street. I've been going to the track for years on end. All right, to continue, the code states, "An application which fails to meet any of these standards shall be deemed adverse to the public interest and shall not be approved." No site conditions or circumstances have changed to justify this. The community is against these proposals. Here is what the county will lose if the racetrack is allowed to be destroyed: lives. The legislative bills clearly indicate that street racing is a substantial issue. Property will be damaged. Innocent people will be killed in street racing accidents. This will further strain police, fire, and EMS services. Jobs: All track employees will be fired. Race day vendors will downsize or go out of business. Local businesses that rely on the racetrack will downsize or go out of business. The local auto parts stores, mechanics and race shops, trailer supply shops and stores, restaurants, advertising media, hotels, grocery stores, et cetera, will markedly suffer. These are local people, members of our community and local businesses, who rely on the racetrack for their livelihoods. We are voters. Tax revenue on sales tax-related purchases, fuel and hotel stays associated with the raceway, will be lost. Stores will go out of business. People will lose their jobs and homes. The venue: Palm Beach International Raceway is an iconic destination in our community. Generations of people and families have made memories at the raceway. It provides a safe environment for families to enjoy, a safe and regulated place for people to race. It keeps people from street racing and remains an icon of this community. Tourism: Race events draw people from all over the world. When people travel here from out of town, there are trickle-down effects, the economy on the entire community. The memories they make and the money they will spend have lasting impacts.
Thank you, sir. And you're Gary?
I'm Gary Conti.
All right, Gary.
Yes, I reside at 18710 90th Street, North Loxahatchee. We moved here nine, nine months ago because I wanted to be close to the track, not knowing that we were closing it. I'm going to continue what they were saying. What will the country gain? What will the county gain? The applicant wants you to focus on the jobs he will create. These are minimum wage warehouse jobs. The applicant wants you to have the county put mechanics, salesmen, chefs, tradesmen, and other skilled labor and local establishments out of business to make way for their minimum wage warehouse jobs. The applicant has no ties to the community. We are members of the community. We are voters. The applicant has the right to apply for the variance amendments and abandonment, just as we, members of the community, have the right to come here, speak out against proposals. It is unfortunate that these meetings are held during normal business hours. You can see the number of people who took off today to be here to speak out against this proposal. I assure you, there are many, many more people who oppose this and would be here if the hearing was held after normal business hours, as the practice of many other countries and municipalities, counties, municipalities. The board is not obligated to grant these requests, especially when the provisions of the code clearly conflict with same. Thank you for your time. I hope your decisions will serve the best interests of our community, put our local businesses, residents, jobs, and historic icon first before large out-of-state corporations by denying these requests. I do have one other thing to add myself. This is from me. I listened to them propose the $4 million that the city would get for permits and the $3 million in tax revenue. That's a nice way of buying your way into this. I think, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Next up to the podium is Jordan Mara and Corey Kramer.
My name is Jordan Mara. I moved to Palm Beach County 12 years ago to manage the road course at Palm Beach Raceway. I was there for six years. We increased revenue by 250%, brought in national events and automotive manufacturers. I met a lot of people in this room during that time. Shortly after the current ownership group took over, it became obvious to me that they were more concerned in wrapping the property into a portfolio to sell it to the highest bidder rather than improving the venue for the benefit of the local community and business interests. Today's meeting is them trying to meet that end goal. There are hundreds of local companies that use this facility to generate revenue via events. Today, I'm here as the operator of two businesses that jointly host over 20 motorcycle-focused events at that venue, as well as throughout the nation. Our events bring hundreds of participants and thousands of spectators on average, all of whom are generating local revenue and increasing safety in the motorcycle community by keeping racing off the streets. The property represents a landmark here in the community. It offers a distinctively local and unique venue that supports a massive automotive industry. It provides a safe haven to keep speeding off the streets. As a motorsports venue, the raceway brings families from all over the state, country, and abroad here to enjoy their passion while they're supporting local hotels, restaurants, and businesses on a daily basis. This proposal destroys something that defines our county, increases public hazard in racing on the streets, destroys local businesses, and robs many of their passion. All of this in the name of concrete blocks and disposable products that are going to line the pockets of businesses that treat people as products. This country was built on small business and passion. I hope you vote to support the community and local businesses and not those that want to destroy something that defines it. Today, I'm sitting behind a group of men that are here, and based on their comments, are in support of this project. In the last 30 minutes, I've witnessed them make multiple jokes and laughing at the citizens' comments in opposition to this project. Their demeaning opinion and lack of respect for our community is pretty obvious to me. I hope, as our representatives, that yours is different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Eric Obel.
Good morning, folks. My name's Corey Kramer. I live at 2976 Bond Drive in Loxahatchee. I just want to tell you a story of my life and what happened as a reflection of the drag racing community and a drag strip. My father owned an engine shop down in Hollywood, Florida, where I was born, a very successful engine shop, and then, all of a sudden, in 1992, they closed down the drag strip that was there. The impact to my family was tremendous. My father's business ultimately went out of business and closed down. We had to look for another means of income for our family. I, as an adolescent, was at the racetrack with my father for many years and still bring my children to the racetrack as well. As a result of that track closing, what did I do? I moved. I moved to Palm Beach County. Why? Because there's a racetrack here in Palm Beach County. And when I moved, I moved here to be able to spend my money in the county on things for my family, to support this racetrack, but to also support this county, because the county had this racetrack available to us. Taking this racetrack away from us and voting in favor of this proposal would have an impact to me, and it would have an impact to many others that are here. My father's business isn't the only business that went out of business as a result of the track closing in Hollywood, and it's going to be the same exact thing if you were to vote in favor of this amendment or this movement. I urge you to deny the request, because I will probably be moving, and I know there are many folks that are here that would likely move as a result of this change in zoning and closing down the racetrack. That is a financial impact. We've talked, they've mentioned many times all the things that it does. Many folks have come up here and said the things that it's going to hurt. I urge, what is the impact that this is going to have negatively to our county and to our funding? I think it's going to be substantial. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Davis to the podium, please. So to the other podium, Madeline Marconi. Eric?
Yes, my name is Eric Obel. I live in Loxahatchee, Florida. I've lived here most of my life. When I came here to South Florida with my parents, we went to Palm Beach Fairgrounds to watch stock car racing, the auditorium for the Stadium Motocross and Palm Beach International Raceway for road racing, motorcycle racing, and drag racing. This is the last track that we have in southeast Florida. We don't need another warehouse. We don't need warehouses here at all. One of the charms of Palm Beach County is parks and things to do. Jobs, the jobs, we already have jobs. Palm Beach County can't fill the jobs that we already have now. We don't need new jobs. We need to keep the jobs we already have. That's the charm of Palm Beach County. Part of the charm of Palm Beach County is this racetrack. Warehouses are not charming, in no way. I think you'd be doing the same as plowing down a baseball field if you let this happen. Please don't let it happen. The other question I have is for the board members, how do we find out the disclosure of the conversations that were, happened with Portland and such? Do we get a copy or any record to know what was going on there?
Sure, what is the?
Question for our attorney.
Yeah, the attorney.
So, you know, obviously you've.
No, he'll answer, he'll address it.
Some sidebar conversations and things, but I haven't had sidebar conversations with you. So, is it public record?
Right. The purpose of the ex parte disclosure at the beginning of the meeting was to make anyone aware of potential ex parte discussions that you are referencing, and so anything that any of the commissioners may have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting has been now made part of the record, and you can request documents that may be available to that effect, or if the commissioners had any specific phone calls, they can expound on that if you would like to cross-examine, but that would be limited to the scope of what they would prefer. But if I recall, and perhaps. But if I recall, um, and perhaps, um, I guess I'll direct this to the chair. Were there any disclosures? Because I can't remember off the top of my head that were more than just in writing?
No, verbal.
Okay.
Verbal, yeah.
Sure, well, then, if, if, within discretion of the chair, if, um, if any of the commissioners would like to expound on the substance of those verbal communications?
Yeah, they can request, they can request in writing whatever specific question that you would, you know, that you would have, and then we can address it that way.
Well, I mean, for instance, you know, I know some of you were paying attention to us, some of you are not, but.
Well, I, 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 you know, I think that, that's a little bit of an assumption, that's a stretch. I thought you were speaking about. No, 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 but we're, I think, I thought you were referring to specific disclosures that we made at the beginning, but to assume that we were not listening.
Said was that you had conversations.
Okay.
What were those conversations?
Okay, and you can, you can submit in writing if there was something specific or if there was anything that any of my.
Can you give us that?
So, sir?
Yes?
Based on our rules for the procedures that we have, you can ask questions as a general public, but they have to be submitted in writing, so please submit it in writing. And when we open up the comments to the commission, then the chair can ask those questions and they can be further elaborated on. So, please, go ahead and write your question down and go ahead and submit it to staff and we'll, they'll bring it up to us.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Good morning. Madeline Marconi, for the record, 3330, Orange Blossom Court, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. On a personal note, just to start, the, I've been going to the racetrack for 25 years. My dad has been drag racing for 25 years, and I met my future husband at that racetrack. And we plan on growing our family here in Palm Beach County and continuing going to that racetrack. So, it means a lot to me amongst a lot of other people here. If I understand correctly, the purpose of these hearings are to do what's in the best interest for the residents of Palm Beach County. My question that I would like to ask each and every one of you today is this: What is the best interest for our Palm Beach County residents? Palm Beach County Sheriff Rick Bradshaw said it himself that it is prudent that this facility stays a raceway. The safety of county residents is his number-one priority, and he himself is worried that if this racetrack is lost, it could lead to senseless fatalities on the streets. So, with our very own sheriff recognizing the importance of keeping this land a racetrack, I again ask you to consider what is doing, what is in the best interest of our community here in Palm Beach County. Keeping it a racetrack is in the best interest. Trickle'd all throughout Palm Beach County are residents with a true love for motorsports. Instead of taking their need for speed to the streets, they take it to a motorsports facility to safely race their vehicles on track. There is no lack of love for motorsports in this county, which is exactly why it needs to stay here. It would be naive to think that a racetrack closing would not cause a strong increase in illegal street racing in our community. Today, as you vote on the development order to abandon the site's previously requested use as a racetrack and vote to approve the site plan changes cited on that application, I want you to ask yourselves this: Are you abandoning the members of Palm Beach County, the residents of Palm Beach County? Because that's exactly how myself and thousands and thousands of other community members will feel, abandoned and replaced with a major corporation. I respectfully ask you to deny this request for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer?
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Davis, I live in Locksahatchee, Florida. So, quick question, did anybody here actually run out of toilet paper? No, okay, so we don't need a warehouse.
Ma'am, you need to address your comments to the board, not the public.
Then if you run out of toilet paper. We don't need a warehouse. We don't. This is about money. As the representatives of the citizens of Palm Beach County, you are not beholden to a large corporation that is looking to cash out, particularly since that same corporation is currently in negotiations to sell three other racetracks in Tennessee, Illinois, and Maryland. They are not in need of profit. You are under the obligation, as you said in your prayer at the beginning of this meeting, to make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens that elected you. And I know you're not elected, but you're appointed by people who were elected. The citizens of Palm Beach County are not clamoring for a warehouse. Hundreds of racers say nothing can be done. The wealthy get whatever they want. The commissioners have already been bought. It's a lost cause. Are they right? Does our government only work for the rich and the connected? You have the ability to deny this zoning change, but in doing so, you will also restore, in many folks behind me, some modicum of faith that our government listens to and represents us, not shareholders who are going to lose a bit of money. There are offers available to the seller that will keep this as a racetrack and still turn a profit while avoiding the certain death sentence that the loss of racing would be to many local small businesses. So, what will you choose? Will you help IRG pad their bank accounts even more? Or will you fulfill the role of true local government and listen to those who will be at the polls in November? There are thousands of people here in Palm Beach County that will recommend, will remember your recommendations to the BCC. For many others, their passion, their small businesses, or both rely wholly or in part on motorsports. Each of you took an oath to serve our community. Please consider, that does not always mean filling the coffers with a measly $7 million bucks, which I'm sure is a tiny percentage of the total budget here in Palm Beach County. It remains remembering that Palm Beach County is more than just a coastal golf community. It is a diverse community whose citizens are passionate about many sports: golf, baseball, everything else, and motorsports. Please do not approve this change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last card for general public is Joe Costello.
Good morning, Joe Costello, Pembroke Pines, Florida, 8200 Northwest 24th Court. And at 18 years old, all my friends were driving south to Miami to drink, to party. I was coming north to West Palm Beach, and I did for many years, and now I'm a working motorsports professional. I travel the country with the National Hot Rod Association, whose mission statement is to keep kids off the street and provide a great, safe place to race. And I'm here to tell you that this track is worth more to the county than the warehouses. It might not be easy to understand if you don't have a motorsports background, but I do. The engine of drive, entrepreneurship, diversity, all happens at the racing facility. We form a community, as you've seen here today. The warehouse, it's a lifeless shelter for products. This track is world-class. It's an unpolished diamond that has been left to just rot because it was a real estate investment. You can bring people from around the world to West Palm Beach to purchase hotel rooms and be here as part of larger events. I do want to give some of my time to Daryl Gwynn, who is a South Florida motorsports legend, who works at the Miami Project to Cure Paralysis and has raised millions of dollars helping people who have received spinal cord injuries. Daryl says, "My dad and I have been coming to PBIR since the day it opened, but even through the name changes, the passion for racing in the community has never stopped. South Florida has one of the biggest automobile enthusiast markets in the world. There's practically a supercar on every corner. The people going to the racetrack every time the gates open aren't all professional drivers. They are business owners, doctors, lawyers, welders, engineers, teachers, mechanics, and so much more. Shutting down this track doesn't stop all that. We won't just walk away tomorrow with new passions. Most of us will take our money and enthusiasts to other facilities in other counties hundreds of miles away. Unfortunately, many others will take it to the streets, which we all agree, that is the worst part. Those of us who are passionate about racing aren't losing, losing a property or cool hangout, we're losing the only safe venue in this county."
Thank you, sir.
Respectfully, Daryl and Jerry Gwynn, I encourage you, please, to just do some more research and education. This is a vital decision you're about to make. Please save our racetrack.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
I'd just like to extend an invitation to the committee. This weekend at PBIR is the Discovery Channel Street Outlaws. There'll be 12,000 attendees, drivers, and, and I will have tickets for each one of you that will call. Please come.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you can go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, in, uh, we are, are finished with the cards that wish to speak. We have an additional 23 cards that, uh, do not wish to speak, but would like to be submitted, um, or that have been submitted, and they basically mirror the, all in opposition of, and they mirror the, uh, comments that we have heard today.
Okay, can I just need to pass this down to our legal? Let me address that, please, in the interim?
Thank you. I know there's a lot of emotional testimony, but I do need to just make a couple of clarifications. Um, there was, um, reference to potentially relaxation of setbacks and other things, such as I assume they would mean building coverage or FAR. Um, other than the variances requested, um, this application complies with all the PDRs in Palm Beach County as consistent with the comprehensive plan. We are not requesting a rezoning associated with this. Um, in that regard as well, there were some concerns about environmental. Not only has ARM reviewed this application, but your entire professional staff has, as well has, and has reviewed the justification and has determined it is, meets the standards required for approval. That being said, and we do have our environmentalists in our team here if you have any specific questions. However, um, in regards to the current status of the track, um, I would request, as I had mentioned before, the seller is here, Mr. Mazo, representing them, and he'd like to make a statement.
Hi, uh, thank you. I'm Ari Mazo, and I represent the seller. Um, just wanted to state the fact that we do have a contract with Portman to sell the property. There has a, uh, there has been a public memorandum of that contract that has been filed, and we intend to proceed with the contract and, uh, through to closing. Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time to the, for the applicant? We can start there, please.
Uh, I have, I have some questions for the applicant.
Yes, please.
Can you put the site plan back up of the proposed development? Uh, I, I noticed in your, in the documents in the county, it does meet the FAR floor area ratio, uh, requirements for that site. What is the amount of impervious area on the site versus, like, the green space? Uh, looks to me like it's pretty much covered up with building, asphalt, and one of the concerns I have is you requested a, uh, to alter one of the variances for keeping trees, the buffer trees, but I'm not sure how you could put 1,200 trees on that site anyway, because it looks to me like it's just solid, impervious area. You have a, a square footage numbers on that? Anybody calculate that, say what's green, what's impervious?
I do not have those numbers because the county's ULDC requirements do not require that calculation to be made. We could get that to you, um, but we are required to put, uh, consider, we're preserving a considerable amount of trees in the areas surrounding. Um, those trees that are shown on there are actually existing trees that were proposed.
Yeah, I saw, you could see from the aerial, there were quite a few trees around it.
Yeah, and we're also going to be, um, providing the right-of-way buffer, and then you'll see the green area out front along, um, the Beeline Highway, which is to the left of the screen. That's going to be, remain undeveloped, and it's another appropriate location for some trees. But the staff has put in a condition of approval that we need to do a landscape plan at the time of final DRO, so all the trees will be addressed then.
What about the runoff of that with South Florida Water Management, uh, whoever the controlling entity is out there? The runoff is that, uh, filtered in any way for oils and stuff? You got 400 trucks setting out there dripping oil? And when that rain comes and washes down that drainage, and then it's going to go into the, I assume, those retention ponds? And then it bleeds from there into the wetlands?
Yes, I would prefer if Lauren Cassis could come up to address that. She's our civil engineer from Kimley Horn, and she'd be more probably appropriate than me to address that.
Hello, I'm Lauren Cassasis with Kimley Horn. And as far as the stormwater treatment goes, we are doing pretreatment in all the dry detention areas, which are the, like, lime green areas. And then after that, it will go to the two onsite lakes, which, there's a large one at the front and then a smaller one at the back. And then our ultimate outfall will be discharging to the perimeter canal that's existing, that's kind of split between our property and the Pine Glades natural area. And we are not, we're going to be, um, the existing site currently has stormwater pumps that offsite discharge into the, an existing ditch, and we'll be matching that existing discharge rate, and we'll be permitting with South Florida Water Management District.
Do they require anything for oil separation from those? Because just putting it in a retention pond, last time I looked, the oil floated to the top on water.
So, their pretreatment requirements are to go into the dry detention area, and it's, um, it's one inch over the site is what's held back in those dry detention areas before being discharged into the lake, which then ultimately discharges into that perimeter canal. That's standards of Florida Water Management District.
Okay. Did you, did Kimley Horn also do the traffic study on this?
Yes.
Good morning, Adam Kerr with Kimley Horn, traffic engineer.
Good morning. I noticed reading in the, uh, the, uh, documents the county provided is that you did a traffic study, and that was from, I believe, Indian Town Road to Seminole Pratt. That was the extent of the traffic study, correct?
Correct. We, the, the traffic study included, uh, Beeline Highway from Pratt Whitney down to PGA, um, or sorry, uh, sorry, from the Martin County line down to PGA, and then also on Indian Town from Beeline east toward Jupiter Farms, and then also on Pratt Whitney.
To PGA, so that went down Seminole Pratt to PGA, or?
Be, Beeline.
Beat, out at the Beeline, further west.
Correct. All of Beeline from Martin County line to PGA.
Okay. So, I guess my concern is where on the traffic is, and it's a ways away, but it's a problem. It's, it's not going to go away, and that's that issue that where it collects at Military Trail, where all of the acreage and all of the new development, thousands of homes, tens of thousands of new homes are being developed out there, cities, West Lake. All that traffic ends up at one point, and it's already a nightmare. Did you do a tra, was anything, look, did you look at anything in that relation at that point, or was it all based on things further west?
So, the, the county's traffic, uh, performance standards requires a two-mile radius for traffic, but it also requires us to extend it beyond that two miles if there's a certain amount of, uh, traffic on the roadways. This did not meet the criteria, so it was a de minimis impact beyond, uh, the two miles, which would be beyond PGA and down to Military. You know, as you can see here, less than half of the traffic would even get down to PGA, and some of that traffic would then disperse onto PGA as well. So, you're looking at something even less than that at Military. So, it would be considered a de minimis impact.
Okay. What, uh, the other issue I have with the traffic is, and I drove out there yesterday, got in the car on the way to work, said, took a right-hand turn and went back out there. Hadn't been there in a while. And that's a four-lane highway divided. Someday, it's going to probably be six, because there's a, so, what, 250-foot right-of-way, 270 right-of-way, something out there, 240, whatever it is. So, you have, right now, currently, four, a four-lane highway divided, traffic speed out there, speed limit, I think, 60. I didn't see anybody doing less than about 70, 75. So, now I get out here, and I've got four accesses onto this divided highway, and I'm putting 400 tractor-trailers onto that. I don't see the issue with them getting off. You have right-hand turn lanes, they can move over, turn in, but when they You have right-hand turn lanes, they can move over, turn in, but when they pull out with, and they're fully loaded tractor trailers, that zero to 60 time on a tractor trailer is pretty slow. And they're going to have to cross the highway and then try to get up to speed, and you have four accesses doing that at one point. That to me, that's a concern to me about safety, traffic safety. There's no signalization proposed. It says something in there about if the county engineer and FDOT decide that it's required. Well, I'm not sure in my mind how it can't be required, that there's not some controlled access for tractor trailers that exit onto that highway, because it's going to, I think you're going to have issues out there with that amount of trucks entering the highway. So that wasn't, I guess, wasn't a requirement?
So we worked with FDOT several meetings to reduce the number of access points along Beeline. There are currently seven along here, and it's being reduced down to four. And at only one of those locations would trucks be able to turn out and turn left across Beeline, the rest they could turn right to go north toward Indian Town. DOT required, even though the traffic volumes don't require it, DOT required turn lanes at all of those locations for that reason, to help get traffic that's turning into the site off of Beeline, away from the speeding vehicles. As far as the signal at the main entrance, we do have a condition to monitor that. We post a bond and monitor that, and if the traffic volumes were, for safety reasons, if it's determined by the county engineer to be warranted, then the developer will have to pay to install that traffic signal. They usually try to wait until the traffic volumes are actually there.
Well, this isn't a traffic volume point. It only takes one of them to pull out at night.
Right.
And cars are coming from Indian Town or wherever, Pahokee out there, Belle Glade area, Okeechobee, that's where they're going. And rear in the back of one of those trucks. I mean, it's not a matter of volume, it's a matter of safety and loaded trucks that can't get up to speed that pull out on a highway, a 60 mile an hour highway in my mind. So I just believe that is, if this goes through, that's just something that's absolutely necessary that the county put in for safety.
Yeah.
And safety is one of the warrants as well as, as traffic volumes, but quasi.
Yes, this is, Beeline Highway is a state-maintained road, and the state will take that into consideration when they make the determination of whether a signal is required at this location or not. But the applicant is required to put money for the signal.
Yeah, I understand that, what, I understand what the document said, I've just, I just think they're wrong. Okay? I think you have to have, if you're going to do something like that, you need the signal right up front.
Yeah, the safety will be one of them.
You've got Pratt Whitney dumping out how many cars just to the east? They have two traffic signalizations to get cars out. And then the, you have the Port of Commerce to the east of that, that dumps out quite a few cars onto there also. They actually have, I believe, a signalization point to get in and out with their trucks, because I know Walgreens distribution centers there, they have quite a few tractor trailers coming and going. But to me, it's just something that's, it just needs to go in up front, not sit and wait for something to happen. Is the surrounding property, can that ever be developed? Is it locked in forever, this natural area?
Yeah, we don't have, we have ARM here. These natural areas around the property are owned by the county and not able to be developed.
Bob Kraus, Department of Environmental Resources Management. Yes, the surrounding properties are part of Cypress Creek Natural Areas under conservation easement. There will be no development in those areas beyond our minimal putting in public access. So.
Could never be sold off?
No.
Developed?
No.
Okay, that was, that's my question.
You know, nothing is permanent, but that it's pretty much locked up. We've locked those up as, as much as we can.
Is it possible for the public to comment on any of this?
Hi, no, the public comments were actually turned off. If there was somebody that was representing a professional, they had a background that was specific to, you know, to rebuttal or something, then that would be an exception. But the public comments are, have been officially turned off.
On the traffic, I just wanted to point out, you were asking if there was a plan for putting lights in there because of concerns about safety that you have. I just wanted to point out, you said there was a plan, that they set money aside in case there are accidents and fatalities, that then they'll put in traffic lights. I thought that was just kind of significant.
That's, that's, that's pretty, that's their standard, but in this case here, I think logic needs to look at the zero to 60 time of a fully loaded tractor trailer and a car coming at 70 miles an hour down, down Beeline Highway. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So you have utilities out there, water sewers out there for accommodate this development? Utilities are out there, water sewer?
Lauren can come up, but we're going to be running utilities to the site.
There's currently no water and sewer, and they have a septic tank and wells for water currently, so we would be extending the existing mains from Pratt Whitney and Beeline Highway, so it's like a mile and a half extension, and it's all Palm Beach County Water Utilities jurisdiction.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to, no applause. I think the racing community did a fantastic job of stating their point and their concerns. You know, I share those concerns about the economy, the small business, the street racing. We have two young men in Jupiter, Florida, that came through that track, and they're now professional Indy car drivers. So I think it's going to impact this community a lot by putting those distribution centers out there. So with everything that, in my mind, it was zoned originally, we killed wetlands in 1960, we zoned that for a recreational amenity for Palm Beach County for, for the residents, and I can't justify voting to change that, so I will not be supporting this petition.
No applause, please. Excuse me, excuse me, please, no applause. It's very emotional. We get that piece, the gentleman there that is doing the, if you can do what he did, then that's cool, with no sound.
Golf clap.
If we can keep the sound all right down, that's great. Okay? Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Traffic? Just for clarification, I'm looking at 1288, 45, and 43. Those are trips going out, correct?
In and out. Those are the directional percentages, yeah.
Okay, and, and how many trucks, 400?
In the, in the peak hour, yeah, the, the total is just over 400 vehicles total. That includes trucks and employees as well.
So the trucks, and those trucks that are going out, I know Mark had already asked, they're fully loaded?
I, there would probably be a mix. It depends on the operations, but there'd probably be a mix of loaded and unloaded vehicles.
Now, the loaded trucks are loaded at the distribution center. The items that go into the trucks, how are they getting out there? Are those additional trucks, additional 400 trucks?
No, this, this is the total.
That's the total for everything?
Yes.
Okay. And the cost of the bond for the lights?
I don't believe that has been finalized yet. We would, we would do a cost estimate for the, the traffic signal and come to an agreement with Palm Beach County Engineering on that signal. I can tell you they're, they're roughly $500,000 to $600,000.
$500,000 to $600,000? I know it's probably not your wheelhouse, but what would the, what would the cost be for an at-fault fatal or multiple fatal crash?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
I know you can't. I'm, I'm making a point. Is the, that's, that's good, I'm finished. Thank, through the chair, is the, the chamber rep still here from the North Chamber? Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for your analysis of the economic impact of the project. Did you also do a comparative economic loss for the current use?
No, that wasn't conducted.
Okay. Could you ballpark it? I realize I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for that, but it's a really, it's an important question.
No, absolutely. Portman Industrial, you know, they came to us, we have a government affairs committee ask for our support. It got approved at that level, and then went to our board and our executive committee for support. So that was the only thing that was presented to us. We didn't have opposition presented, so we don't have those numbers. And we would not be able to give a ballpark figure for that off the top of my head.
Okay. I appreciate your, your time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Kerr? Were you done, Commissioner Kelly, or did you have more questions?
No, I was just going to echo Mark's, Mark's comments.
Please go ahead and finish up.
I'm, I'm done, that's where I'm at.
Okay, great. This young lady in the front who silently clapped, I apologize, your name was Jennifer? And you were with another gentleman, Bob?
Eric.
Eric. The, the question that you asked, as, as far as the disclosures, I'm happy to have that conversation with anybody. Typically, when a member of the general public contact the, contact me personally, or a member of, you know, an applicant, a developer, somebody who's representing a builder, when they contact us, they basically give us an overview of what they're going to be presenting here at the meeting. Ask us if we have any questions in advance. They also kind of go through their timeline of meetings with the general public as it regards to development in the immediate area, you know, and just go over code and things along that nature. You know, for us, it's just a chance to ask questions, continue to do research prior to these meetings, and gain as much information as we can in order to come to a decision here at the meeting itself. So I do appreciate that question. You know, all of our information is online through the Palm Beach County zoning webpage, and you're more than welcome to email us or contact us at any time. As far as the project goes, I don't have any specific questions, Madam Chair, other than the fact that I will say that I cannot support the project moving forward. I would not consider myself a race fan, you know, in general. I didn't grow up in racing or anything else. However, I did have the experience recently to go to the Sebring 12-hour race, and what I can tell you is this community that is in front of us today is a dead-on representation of the community at these races. It's small vendors, it's, you know, food vendors, you know, different parts and, you know, various supplies and things along that nature, but the community is amazing. And at the 12 hours of Sebring, which is an international race, people talked about Palm Beach County, and they talked about this racetrack, and it is one of the last racetracks in southeast Florida, and it needs to be preserved. It's been there 58 years, and if there's anything that we can do to preserve it, I think we should.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Caliendo?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I had it before you. We're a little slow today.
Okay.
Just to follow up where Mark was, to be honest with you, that was one of my questions, is the concern of the traffic that's out there. We always are negligent in looking at the future in traffic versus looking at the particular projects, especially when the traffic engineer that came up said they only looked in a two-mile radius. Well, that's nothing compared to what could grow out there, and the traffic and durs is going to be put out. And what concerns me, which we, the light does wonders, but who's going to talk about the stacking of these big tractor trailers, and how do you control that? And at night, there's not like good lighting or any lighting out there. I, I just think the, the traffic is a bigger concern than not. And I, what I didn't realize until Mark brought it up correctly, is where you're sticking 1,200 trees. I mean, I look at, I've, I've looked through all of these drawings, and there's barely room for rock, let alone tree. So I, I think that's well wishing that they're going to put 1,200 trees on there and do it properly, and the proper growth of trees, and so on and so forth. But my biggest concern is the traffic. I don't know if we have the right to control, you know, what happens to a piece of property and restricting people's property rights. I do, I, I go back, when I was a kid, I raced out there myself, and it's a great place to go, but I just don't know what our authority is here in stopping people's property rights if they want to bring something forward. But what I'll tell you, what we do have an obligation is to make sure what the growth of the future is. And as Mark presented eloquently, the stacking, the trucks coming in and out of here, that was, that was my first concern when I looked at this thing. And my concern is the stacking of them. It's not just what that light's going to do, even if you put it in today. It's where, where do you put this kind of, this many vehicles, and when they're loaded, as Mark says, you can't stop these things. So I don't think enough has been put into engineering of this to gain my support. I would have supported it until I looked more carefully at their plan and at, and at the traffic study. I think the traffic study was terrible, in my opinion. It didn't go far enough, and it had longevity to it, I guess is the real question. And we didn't do that in Delray, we didn't do that in some other communities, and we're now paying for it, trying to get people to subsidize, putting money in reserve for lights or for widening the road, and then the county never has their money to put their percentage in, and so the roads really never get to where they should in a timely manner. And I think we have, we have an opportunity here to do a good, better job, as Mark puts forward, in, in looking at a better traffic study and a better use of this, these roadways. So with, with that said, they don't have my support either.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarborough?
Actually, I have a couple of questions. One, who determines historical designation on a site? Who decides that?
Brian Davis, the Planning Division. Cultural resources are handled by the Planning Division. Generally, however, an application for a designation is owner-initiated. If, if something you don't have local owner support, it doesn't go forward at all. There's only nine properties in Palm Beach County that are on the county's Register of Historic Places. Almost all of them are publicly owned, they're in county parks.
Okay, thank you.
May I? I'm sorry.
No, no, just one moment, Commissioner Scarborough.
I'm sorry.
Unless it had to do with the historical designation?
I'm sorry, no, it has more to do with traffic.
No.
Fire station, the community out there, I know I've gotten several calls regarding fire stations and the need for a fire station. Is that somewhere in this plan that I didn't see?
Closest one is Haverhill Boulevard, I believe. That's closer?
So there's the community colusa that... And I think this has been answered, the racetrack is still operating, yes?
Commissioner?
I actually, I still had a, I had another question on the, and I don't know if anybody can really answer me on this, on street car racing. Do we have statistics on that if this closes? I mean, do we know that that is going to increase? And at what percentage?
No? Okay.
So it's just, it's all, just, we're guessing that it's going to increase. And I wouldn't, I, I would expect that it would, but I didn't know what, if there were And as to the commissioner's comment on the semis pulling out and getting up to speed, you know what, I hadn't thought about that until you brought that up, and I think that's valid and something to certainly think about. I mean, I've gone back and forth on yes, no, yes, no, on this project, and I think that's probably my biggest, right now, my biggest thought on denying this, but I want to hear what everybody else has to say.
Madam Chair, my name is Cliff Hertz, I'm an attorney here on behalf of the applicant.
You finished? Yeah. Commissioner Scarborough?
And we're hearing a lot about traffic and stacking and left turns out and everything else, and as a result of the concerns relating to traffic, the applicant has asked me to come up and request a postponement in order to do that better traffic study. That seems to be a concern of Commissioner Caliendo, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Beatty, I'm now hearing Commissioner Scarborough also have some concerns about it, and we'd like to really get a more detailed study that shows the stacking, that shows the left turnout. You know, we've had the Park of Commerce for years, we've had heavy industrial... You know, we've had the Park of Commerce for years. We've had heavy industrial there. We've had left turns out onto the B-line.
They have a traffic.
And there is no signalization. There is now, only in the last six months.
As it develops.
Only in the last six months. But Walgreens distribution has been there forever. But that's not, I'm not here to argue the point. I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm just here asking that you give us the opportunity to come back with a more detailed study that really flushes out all of the traffic issues that seem to be the number-one issue. I'm not making light of the businesses that are supported by the track. I'm not making light of anything, any of the comments that the people made here. But I am trying to see if we would be given the opportunity to address the concerns that I'm hearing, the primary concerns that I'm hearing from the DAS. And that's our.
Well, you're representing the owner. You're the attorney for the owner?
Applicant.
For the applicant, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Well, then can I ask you, Madam Chair, if I may, if I can ask you to come back with a couple of other things, too. Come back with a plan that, I'm sorry?
Okay.
Can I say something real quick, Sam, before you go down that road? All these people showed up here today, did their job.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Because the applicant didn't do his thoroughly.
That's where I was going.
We'd be forcing these people to have good people to give up their day job and come back here in our day job and go through this again. I don't think that's right. If they need to do an additional traffic study, they can do it between now and BCC and present it to BCC. So I'm not in favor of postponing this project.
Yeah, okay, before we get a little light carried away here.
My response is.
Hold on, just one second, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, what I would like to do as well, I would respectfully like to hear the opinion because I don't believe that the traffic study was necessarily the whole piece.
Right.
I would like to hear the opinion of the other commissioners first, my fellow commissioners. So, you know, starting with Commissioner Pavlik.
Well, women, I never forgot to finish.
You never finish.
Well.
Hello?
Hello? I take after Sherry.
All right, go ahead.
No, but I wanted to add to that. I wanted him to come back, or going on to BCC, as Mark brings correctly up. But I want to see something with, something better with these trees and the landscaping and not just the traffic. And so, you know, we got some, or BCC, if that's the way everybody chooses to go, that has something really more sufficient to do a judgment on them. Because I raced out there as a kid myself. And I will tell you, I would have been on the streets doing it with the people we were racing against if they didn't have that track. So I'm all for keeping this track if we can. But if we have no choice to go in another direction, then we need to make sure we've done it very carefully. And Mark brought up another, something I didn't think of, that is, where does this oil and this stuff flow into? Is it gonna go into the wetlands that are there and pollute those as well? I mean, what are they gonna do? They have some kind of cleaning system if they're such an animal?
I gotta believe if there's a racetrack, you've got oil there as well.
Yeah, but, but.
As much.
Yeah, it's on.
But not on a daily basis.
Yeah, it's not on a daily basis.
1,500 cars, 400, 400 tractor-trailers coming and going constantly. The racetrack, it's a weekend usually, sometimes night situation. They're not all out there all the time.
Right, it's so little. The little come from cars is nothing in comparison to tractor-trailers and that are constantly running the entire time while they're there. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Can I make a motion on that postponement?
Can we just, can we just hear from the other, yeah, the other commissioners first? And then we'll, we'll address motions.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for the current owner. Is he still in the audience? Thank you. You had mentioned that you are under contract currently with the applicant. And you would move forward, I guess my question is, if this is due diligence period and this does not pass, and I guess so it's a double fold for a question for you and for the applicant, would they still purchase the property? Or would you remain the owner and they have an ability to get out of the?
I mean, that, that I'm not sure I can answer.
Okay.
I would have to imagine anybody as smart as these guys would have, you know, an escape clause, you know, contingent on zoning approvals. I can't imagine they'd sign a blind contract.
Well, and that's what I was thinking. So if, if, you know, this is a what-if, but if you were to remain the owner, I heard there was potential other offers, and I'm not asking to get into your personal business. But I guess I'm just looking at the bigger picture because we do want to do the best, if you have a parcel right now that is not something that you anticipate holding and running as a racetrack, what would that look like in the future? And would it end up not having racing there at all? And so regardless of whether Portman was able to move forward with theirs, I guess it's just an idea of what the intent is for the property in the future.
Yeah, again, as you said, there's a lot of moving parts. I'm not sure I can give a definitive answer. But our intention is to sell the track.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner, you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, anything else?
Yeah, I would just echo that I would not be in favor of postponement, that they could move on to BCC.
Okay, Commissioner Brumfield?
My fellow Commissioner Pavlik echoed what I've been listening to the entire time of the presentation, as well as the comments from people. There is an owner, but the owner is not the applicant. You've got passionate people about a sport they love, a lifestyle that they choose to live. But those passions and lifestyles don't seem to be reflected by the current ownership of this track, although it is still currently undergoing. Regardless of whether or not it's this project or another, the people here need to sincerely think about alternatives or putting themselves in a better position to deal with current ownership if they intend to keep their manner of life. As my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Caliendo referred to, he briefly mentioned it, the ownership right, the owner has rights to, to this particular parcel. So even though this particular project may not pass under this circumstance, this is not the end of the day for Marosa, which is what it was when I first moved here, now known as Palm Beach International Raceway. And being in Gainesville, watching another track, having had experiences with people who are on those tracks, yes, it's a lifestyle. And quite frankly, one of the old books we used to read was Hot Rod. It used to be recommended for high school students. I read it back, I won't tell you when, but the bottom line is, yes, you know, things may take, people may take their sport into their own hands without an outlet. But if you don't preserve the outlet that you have, what are you gonna have? That's what I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Savard, I feel like we haven't heard from you. Do you have any comment?
Yeah, I've been pretty quiet today.
Yes, you have.
I've been looking at this at a different tact. What if this was a vacant piece of property? It didn't have that use on it. What would our attitude be? Would it change? And I've been sitting here, listening, and I do have a concern with the traffic. So I think if this was even a vacant piece of property, I would still have a concern with the traffic. Commissioner Beatty brought it up, you know, that I didn't think about before. I thought it's a very important aspect. It's a, you know, they're drag racing on that road. And that's, that's an issue on the B-line. And you put slower trucks out there, there's gonna be problems. So that needs to be worked out. And I also would not be in favor of releasing the, or relaxing the landscape requirement. I would not be in favor of that either. So, and I'm not in favor of postponing.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I'm the last woman standing, okay? I echo that everything that was mentioned about the traffic concerns, 100%. I am also not in favor of decreasing at all any of the landscaping, the variances, you know, as far as that, bringing that down to 50%. I also think that we should not, while I do, I have all due respect for the fact that the owners, you know, it's your right to sell to whomever and take whatever offers come your way. I really cannot bypass the impact that I think that this is going to have on community. We do see that Palm Beach County has changed. It is changing. We see just since the pandemic, we've got people coming from north, you know, like every, it's so different. And I'm looking at the jobs and the salary, and again, respectfully, the 54,000, I mean, come on, that is a little laughable, you know, to think that that's something that everybody's gonna be, woo-hoo, 54,000 a year, you know, like where are you living? But the, I would, there are a number of people that are currently employed at that track. There are a number of small businesses. There are events that, you know, that take place there. That is gonna have an impact once that is gone. I mean, I really don't think that we can ignore that piece of it. And, you know, the warehouse, what is gonna happen to these families? You do have generations. There is a sense of community that I think that we have come to see over the last couple of years, how important that is, just from the stance of mental health, okay? So there are a lot of issues and concerns here that really trouble me. I am, you know, the people that came out that took their time to come out today, I can't, you know, discount that at all, from all walks of life, that, you know, the diversity, the demographics, we see that the residents, we see the small business owners, you know, everybody, you know, they can support of this. And I do feel that the revenue, but, you know, I, please stand behind, you've got to come together and probably engage a community. It was a lesson, I think, for many of us here that don't go to the racetrack. Do you know what I mean? You know, that we don't, the impact that it does have on community. And as citizens, and we spoke about the disclosures, so the one piece I'd want to just make sure this clear, in the same way that we have applicants, just so you understand just process, just as far as being a citizen, okay? The same way that we have applicants, we have public emails, all right? It is every citizen's right to email a commissioner at any time for something that is in front of them, a question, or if you're, you know, submitting paperwork. And so what we do, you know, the applicants that are used to this game, they do it all the time because they know that that is their right, you know? They can call us. Any, we don't, just to let you know as well, we are, you're not obligated to take a call, return a call. It's just public that we have received it, and that's what we disclose, all right? Conversations as well are not all the same. Some of us may choose to just be a sounding board and hear. It's not always like a back-and-forth, you know, like, you know, banter. But we are required just to disclose that we have been notified, okay, by an applicant or by a citizen. And, you know, that's what that's about, if that gives you clarity, okay? All right. And so just for the record, I'm also not in favor of a postponement. And I'm, at the present time, I'm not in favor of approval.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes.
First of all, I'm gonna make the motion, just, I don't know if it's legal or what, but let's make a motion to deny the postponement of the project and send it to BCC next month.
Second.
There's, there's no need to deny a postponement. There wasn't anything on the floor for that, I don't believe.
Okay, very good.
And I would, kind of reading the room here, if there's gonna be a motion for denial, if you could please reference the specific variance criteria.
Right.
And development order amendment criteria that you believe have not been satisfied.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm gonna move to deny a type-two variance to eliminate cross-access, a compatibility buffer, a right-of-way buffer, subject to conditions exhibited in C1, that they do not meet the requirements of the variance code. I believe it's 2B. Do you have the correct chapter and verse of those variants?
Of the ULDC.
Looking to staff to give the correct reference.
Pulling it up. Just the ULDC.
Bob, can you just make it general, that they don't meet the conditions of the ULDC?
Specific would be better, I think.
I wish they would write that at the top of the, give me that at the top of the variance log, so we can.
We have 2B7E6.
What she said.
2B, yeah.
Second. Sorry, which, that's just the, that's the general provision, then there's seven specific, or however many.
Variants one through seven. Don't you have to read all of those?
If you could point to a specific one, or if you believe they all haven't been satisfied.
Can't you just read them all?
Yeah, can I, I need to just get a clarification. On our add delete, the variance also included loading area and outdoor screening. So that would have to be part of the motion as well. But I wanted to just double-check if you were denying all of the variance requests. There was cross-access, which was a cross-access to the preserve areas.
Okay, let's take it quick, so that we're specific here.
And then there was elimination of the compatibility buffers, the right-of-way buffers, and then the loading and outdoor storage screening. So I'm just asking for clarification. Is it the board's intent?
I'm just denying all of it, all the above. It wasn't part of the original 2009 zoning rate?
They had variances for cross-access before.
Those stay in place.
Any compatible buffers.
Right, those stay in place. This is just.
If this thing gets denied, they'd still have those variances previously approved.
They would still have what they have, right, right.
Yeah.
Just trying to simplify this and kill it.
So your motion would also include the loading area and outdoor screening as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Variants 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 4A, 4B, 5A, 5B, 5C, 7, and as amended in the.
Add delete.
Add delete.
Right. And so the standards for the variance, A is special conditions and circumstances exist that are related to the parcel of land, building, or structure that are not applicable to other parcels of land, structures, or buildings in the same district. That's A. Then we have B, which is special circumstances and conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. Granting the variance shall not confer upon the applicant any special privilege denied by the plan and this code to other parcels of land, building, or structures in the same district. That's C. D is literal interpretation enforcement of the terms and provisions of this code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other parcels of land in the same district and would work an unnecessary and undue hardship. E, granting the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the parcel of land, building, or structure. F is granting the variance will be consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of the plan of this code. So those are, oh, and G, granting the variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. So those are the standards that you have before you. You'd only have to select one, and that would be denial, or you can select two, three, four, you can select all of them. So we just need clarification on which ones.
All of them. That's what my motion was.
Okay, all right. So we have fellow commissioners, we, yeah, we have a motion in front of us to deny based on all of the variances. Am I clear?
Yes, that was my motion.
Will the motion be with prejudice or without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Without?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Madam Chair? Hold on, we have two more motions.
Two more motions.
Ladies and gentlemen, I make a motion to deny a development order amendment to reconfigure the site plan, delete, and modify uses and modify conditions of approval, subject to the conditions of approval exhibited in C2.
Second.
Also, if we could get reference to the criteria that you believe have not been satisfied.
So, the evaluation for, this would be, the motions are for development order amendments. So there's two resolutions that are proposed for modification, one for the previously approved MUPD that had conditions, and the other one has to do with the requested uses that were previously approved. The standards that we evaluate are consistency with the plan, that's the first one, consistency with the code, compatibility with surrounding uses, design minimizes adverse impact, the design minimizes environmental impact, development patterns, adequate public facilities, and change conditions or circumstances. So again, you can find only one of those standards, and the motions would fail, or multiple, or all of them.
All the above.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Beatty?
I had a motion on number two. Sam seconded it.
Okay.
We need a vote. We need a vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Madam Chair, I recommend denial of a development order amendment to modify subject, to modify uses subject to the conditions of approval as exhibited in C3 for all conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
If I could just say one thing?
Yes.
You're not done yet. You're going to BCC next month, so you need to show up there. If you love this thing and want to keep it, they have the final say on it, so.
Yeah. Oh, 9:30.
So our attorney have the date of when this will be at BCC?
Yes, it's Thursday, April the 28th, at 9:30 a.m., okay? Pardon me?
He might suggest in.
Okay, just one second, did you have, Commissioner Caliendo, did you have something to say? Did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's all of our items.
All right.
Is there any comments from the county attorney?
Spoken enough, no comments.
I want to thank you again, staff. Thanks a lot. Baptism by fire was my.
This is the second time, right?
Yep. But, yeah, I want to thank you, and, and as well, even to my fellow commissioners, thank you so much.
I have a comment for staff. They, I guess this is the, the first time they mailed these through the post office, and you see what I got?
Oh, my goodness.
It was soaking wet, ripped, and they tried to shove it in my mailbox. Usually like FedEx or UPS, they just bring it up to the doorstep and leave it under the covered area. But you're going to get this back, you can see what I got. I didn't do it.
Excuse me, the, the hearing is not yet over, if you could please move your conversations outside, thank you.
I, excuse me. Excuse me.
Yeah, I did it.
Excuse me, we haven't yet adjourned, so could you just take the conversations outside? Thank you.
I actually.
Okay.
Boy, you know how to clear a room, don't you?
I have a question. I have, you know, we, we require the disclosure of the ownership interests, and it keeps, it seems like everyone is an LLC or something, that we still don't know who the applicant is, who is.
You'd have to look up the LLC.
I know, but even there then, it just, it has a, it doesn't tell you who they, who the owners are. And I think, I think that that's important, that we know who the owner is.
The LLC does disclose who the manager, manager, president.
It has the manager, which could be anybody, but it's still, I mean, there was a reason that it was disclosed.
Yeah, but by statute, that's the purpose of, you can ask our county attorney, but by statute, that's the purpose of the LLCs. They don't have to disclose who's, who owns the stock.
Well, I, I thought for a while that we were getting a whole list of who all was involved in the corporation or whatever, I mean, we, we could have two county commissioners that are owners of the corporations, the LLCs, that were sitting here and were approving things, that we don't know who, who it is.
Well, Exhibit B of each disclosure, they're supposed to list off the owners and the percentage held. I mean, you know, typically, we have them listed out with a percentage of the ownership.
Can you request the ownership and based on stock, who owns what stock? That's like an K and a Q.
Well, if it's public, we don't, I don't think we have that.
You know, and if it was a public-held company, it'd be in the K's and the Q's, who owned what. But in an LLC, I don't think you have to disclose that.
If a commissioner had a.
So then why do we have it in the pack?
Ask our county attorney, because I don't think I'm wrong.
No, they, I mean, for purposes of determining if you have a conflict, it's important for you to know who has an equitable interest in a company.
But how can we find that out?
I will defer to staff as to whether that's normally included, it sounds like it is.
It's a required.
What it said, it was greater than 5%, and then there was a list behind each one. There were three that was in the last item that we reviewed. And one was Palm Beach, and the other one was Marosa, and there was another one for, what is it, the Palm Beach International Raceway. But then if you look at who owns more than 5%, then you had more of a comprehensive list, but it did not designate how much of a percentage each individual person had.
I mean, we could have somebody's husband who's the attorney representing them, and they're voting on it.
Exactly, my point.
And they're not, and they're not required to officially disclose.
I know what Sherri's point was, I was just helping her with it.
Wouldn't we have to recuse? Because there's a financial interest in that?
They, they should, they.
But I think what they're getting at is if you don't know, how can you know to recuse yourself?
We could revisit the disclosures and the percentages at the back and compare how Planning does their review and how we've been doing these reviews of disclosures with the county attorney, because this looks like a, several LLCs are on Exhibit B, but there's any percentage breakdown, names of the owners, as Planning does. It just lists them off. So we will definitely revisit that and see if we need to make changes.
But I have another question, what goes in the same place Sherri's is, let's forget who owns what shares at the moment, what if a commissioner somewhere has a wife or a husband who is either attorney or representative of the agent? How do we make sure that they're disclosing that?
We've been down that road before, they went to jail.
Well, no, no, I'm saying that because there could be that case.
Are, are you referring to a commissioner in the zoning commission?
Oh, any commission, any commission, it could be.
I, I mean, it could be any commission, it could be.
Any commission.
Well, for your purposes, you need to be aware of your conflicts that prevent you from voting here. And then, as Lisa said, zoning and I will revisit to make sure that the proper interests are being disclosed on the, in the back.
There could be cases, I could think of a couple, it could be cases of people that they're, they could be voting on something and their husband's the attorney representing some, one of the LLCs or something.
Understood.
Yeah, I know where Sherri was going.
Okay.
You're so smart, Sam.
Yeah, I know.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I was, I was going to do that.
You can't make a motion, you're the chair.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Did that, and seconded it down there.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone, okay, we're, we're out, okay, thank you.
Mic drop.